The Commission, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Let's stand and do the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As power heads, dear heavenly Father, be with us today as we conduct the business of our city. Be with those in attendance. Let us remember the true meaning of Christmas at this time of the year. Be with our first responders and our military and bless them. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Any additions or corrections to the December 3rd meeting?
Nope, looked good.
Okay, it'll stand approved as submitted. At this time, we have a public comment period. And this is basically for anyone that's not on the agenda. We'll have time for the other issues later, but this is for somebody that wants to make a comment. We'll give you five minutes to address the commission. Anybody? If not, no, we'll wait, talk about the pool later. Okay, that'll take care of that.
Mayor Commissioners, we'll go through the report of the City Manager. We have two staff presentations and the rest of that should go pretty quickly. And then, just for everybody's awareness, I think we'll move up in the order, old business C. Once we get to the business items, that's the pool discussion. And then, following that, we'll move up the ordinance. It's the recommendation of the Community Health Advisory Committee. And I'm not finding which agenda item is, but it's the one that we have. The students and representatives of the Community Health Advisory Board. That way, they can get back to school.
Under the considerations.
So, just make that note. But we'll go ahead and get started on the report of the City Manager. Item 7A, Golf Professional Jason Hayes will present an update on Buffalo Dunes Golf Course. Jason?
Mayor Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be before you at the end of the year. We had a fantastic 2019 out at Buffalo Dunes. If everybody can remember, the first about 65 days, we had snow on the ground. We started out the year about 1,500 rounds behind what we normally do. As of the 10th of December, we were at 16,824 rounds. We're probably going to be a little over 17,000 rounds for the year. So, I was really excited about that. And you can see the parking lot, the picture on the right. That was a couple of days after the big snow, the beginning of the year. And it was, I actually got stuck. So, it was, it was kind of fun that day. My next slide, Buffalo Dunes and junior golf. Junior golf is a big part of what we do. We hosted six high school tournaments. We hosted four junior golf tournaments. We had 24 kids participate in our PJ Junior League, which is kind of our flagship program. That ran from April all the way through the end of October. And we had about 100-plus kids that went through all of our junior programming throughout the year in 2019. The first picture on the left is an event that we call Parents and Putting. It's for kids six and under. We kind of introduce them to the game. The middle picture is our PJ Junior League team at one of our practices. And then, the picture on the right was the First Annual Southwest Kansas Junior Amateur that we hosted in conjunction with the Southwest Kansas Pro-Am. So, that's something, that's an event that's going to keep going forward. So, we're pretty excited about that. Next slide is the Garden City Community College Bronk Buster Golf Team. The picture on the left, we were at the national tournament in May. We finished 16th. And then, our whole new squad for this year, for 2019. We've, we're, got kids from all over the world. We've got two kids from Sweden, a kid from Portugal, Canada, Germany, and then a lone U.S. kid from Colorado. So, the goal is, we've started nurturing some kids. And we've got three of them back here that play on our high school team. Hopefully, in the next few years, we'll be able to recruit some local kids to play at the junior college. But we finished the year ranked 12th according to Golf Stat, and we were as high as ninth in the country. So, we're making a big impact there. The next slide is our men's and women's high school program. Phenomenal year in 2019. The women on the right finished third at the state tournament this past October. The men had a fourth-place finish last May. Cylon Audrain, who's this gentleman right here, if anyone knows him, he's won state twice individually. He's playing at the University of Kansas right now. And then, Alyssa McMillan, she finished second individually in the state tournament. She lost in the playoffs. So, we're starting to have a pretty good impact on the high school program. Coach Prieto and Coach Speck have done an amazing job. And they're, it's fun to be involved with all that. Our next slide is women's golf in Buffalo Dunes. Lauren Richmeyer and a gentleman named Nick Mann started a program this past year called Ladies First Lesson Series. We ran three different sessions. We had 45 ladies participate in that. And then, our flagship event, the Garden City Charity Classic. The benefactor for the proceeds that we raise all go to area high school women's golf programs. In the last couple of years, we've donated over $45,000 to those programs. So, we're slowly making an impact. Women's golf is becoming, is big time, and it's only going to get better. So, this last, these last slides, terrible impact that Buffalo Dunes has locally. We donated over 75 rounds of golf to different organizations as far as raffle prizes, door prizes. We gave out six golf memberships. And then, we also donated 15 hours of lessons. And the tournaments that we've hosted out of Buffalo Dunes helped raise over $165,000 in charitable giving this past year. So, those events, the Southwest Kansas Pro-Am, the Garden City Charity Classic, the Kansas Junior Open via AJGA, and then, you know, local events like the Knights of Columbus, United Way, Real Men, Real Leaders. So, we have a pretty big impact on the community, which I'm proud of. Next slide is just some other highlights. The picture on the left is three generations of golfers that all started out at Buffalo Dunes. This was taken this last, kind of late April, early May. And then, Clay Payne and his staff. I guess, middle of April, we burned all the native rough, thinking that it'll be a little more playable this past year. And then, all of a sudden, we had those spring rains and stuff. And that stuff grew like a weed. It became tough. And then, the gentleman on the left, his name is Nick Mann, he was our second assistant. He actually left us in August to become the head golf professional over at Simmeron Golf Course, which is one of the things I like. I mean, I'd like my staff to get trained up and then kick them out and go be successful other places. And so, he's the first one from here that has gone on to do that. Also, just recently, Lauren Richmeyer passed his PJ schooling. He's going to be a Class A PJ professional. He'll get elected to membership in the first part of January. So, we'll have two Class A professionals on staff, which I think is phenomenal for us. So, all in all, it's been a great year, and it was a busy year. 2020 is shaping up to be super busy with the move of the Southwest Kansas Pro-Am to June. We have AJGA, then with the possibility of the Charity Classic moving into August. Also, in May, we host the Women's, excuse me, NJCAA Women's National Championship. So, it's going to be a busy year. And our programming just keeps growing and growing. And I'm excited, so, yes, sir.
What, does that, our Golf Across Kansas program I see advertised, is, do you see a lot of golfers from the east side?
The book that we sell. We have more Oklahoma and probably Nebraska. Not a lot of those guys from the east side of the state. Typically, the east side of the state, they're going to pay a green fee. They don't participate in it a whole lot. And it's something that we've only done for a year. And I think as it becomes more and more, people are aware of it, I think it'll be a benefit to us.
I just wondered, they promote it quite, I mean, a lot on TV, I've noticed.
So, it's good. I think just anything like we can do like that to help promote Buffalo Dunes and Garden City is good, so.
Very good.
Well, Lauren, I appreciate just your leveraging this incredible resource, a resource and asset for our city and also just our region. So, I know you bring in tons of people and lots of dollars to the businesses of Garden City, so, thank you.
It's been fantastic, and I'm glad to be the golf professional at Buffalo Dunes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Appreciate it.
Item 7B, Court and Defendant Coordinator, Alicia Wakeham will provide an interview or presentation on municipal court.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I'm here to kind of reflect on what we've done this past year in municipal court. We've had a lot of change over the last six months with our retirement of our judge and our prosecutor going to a private law room. So, my first slide, that's our previous court schedule and our current court schedule. Previously, we'd have court Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, Thursdays, all at 8:00 p.m. A judge and prosecutor would be needed for all four settings. Currently, how we have it, it's, or how we will have it, Mondays are kind of like a status check. People are just coming on and seeing how they're doing on their cases, if they need more time to get licenses, stuff like that. Tuesdays are mainly our trial days. One Tuesday a month, we have our probation check-in days where probationers come back in, check in with the judge. It's kind of helped a lot, making people stay on track and stuff like that. And then, Mondays are our first appearance dockets. And then, Thursdays are where we have mainly prosecutors, people who need to see a judge or counsel come in. And that's kind of helped a lot. We only have to have a judge and prosecutor there three times a week now instead of four times. That's helped a lot with our scheduling. Our next slide. Well, that's our, that's currently our personnel. Previously, we had a court administrator, senior court clerk, three clerks, a probation officer, a judge, and our bailiff. We've cut staff quite a bit. Currently, we have only two court clerks, a senior court clerk. Positions were combined as Court Defender Coordinator, which I am now, but that's the probation officer and the court administrator that was combined. And then, our judge went to part-time last year, and then, now we have our bailiff still. Now, the rules have changed a little bit. We'll still have our court clerks as well, but they'll be taking on a lot of prosecution administrative duties. We're taking away our prosecution staff a little bit, that is one of the things municipal court, their administrative duties have. The next slide is our caseload, our caseload for the past few years. The caseload has downed a little bit in 2019, but we are still collecting the amount per case that we have in the past. That's our next slide. This is diversion and fast tracks. These are programs that the city prosecutor has offered to individuals to help keep things off their records. The diversion program, we can total totals. With our caseload, diversion is still up, even though our caseload is a little lower than normal. And the fast tracks, it's still up as well. They're still, they're still up about 70% from what they were in the past. And then, with the next slide, that's our court appointed attorneys throughout the years. They're still about the same, court appointed attorneys, especially of not having a judge and prosecutor. I think this past few months, people were in more attorneys to try to see if they can get their cases resolved. I think next year, that'll go down a little more when people have more of an opportunity to speak with the judge or prosecutor. And then, the last, the last slide that we have is our cases and reflections. This shows, it's went down a little bit. I think cases are getting resolved more frequently than they have, so that's went down.
How's it, how's it going with the new schedule? I mean, you said it's helping with scheduling, but with the new staffing and changing to be kind of more consistent across weeks?
Once we get fully staffed, we'll give the judge and the prosecutor. And I think this will be a lot easier for the clerks. They'll have more time to do their other additional administrative duties that they'll get added from what the prosecution staff needs to do.
Have you seen better efficiency, do you think, or?
Yeah, the stuff that we have is really good. They're, they've taken on the rules great. Their efficiency, over the past, I'd say, two years or so, the efficiency of municipal court has been great. We've improved a lot.
Good, good work, thank you.
What, just, what do you think's contributed to that reduction in caseload that we see over the last five years or so?
Yes, so that's something we've looked at, that I actually look at quite frequently and keep my eye on. The caseload has been going down since the time in which I was prosecutor, and it's just kind of slowly crept down and down and down. We've been having conversations about what that might be related to, you know, whether or not you could track accidents to that. You know, were accidents lower or higher? And we don't necessarily have a correlation directly to that. It was one of the questions that we asked during the organizational study that we had. And some of that was attributed to numbers of open positions at the police department. I know during this last year, there were like nine open positions, and so, that could have contributed. There's probably a lot of factors, but that's definitely something that as that number gets to where we are now, that 2,200 number is extremely low for municipal court in general. I would say probably the 6,000 is really high for municipal court. So, I think a good, even steady number that we should plan on is about 3,000 to 3,500, maybe up to 4,000 in a busy year. But we definitely need to be paying attention to that and understanding why. And the police department and municipal court need to be working closely together to understand those dynamics, because it does have an impact.
Well, I was wondering too, well, I was glad to see the numbers are down, but the fact that, you know, when they rerouted the bypass through the city, I'd wondered if the numbers would go up, especially the number of accidents and tickets, knowing that there was so much more traffic, truck traffic within the city. So, yeah, I was, I mean, I was surprised. I was glad a lot of things are getting resolved quickly, so. But, and also that the working conditions and, you know, being flexible in the staffing, I know that you guys have done a wonderful job, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7C, Garden City Fire Department recently received gifts of fire and rescue equipment from two local businesses, Garden City Co-op and Tyson Fresh Meats. And we greatly appreciate their generosity and recognition of the public service provided by the department. Italian Chief Collins couldn't be here today, but there's a memo enclosed in the packet with information on each of those apparatus that we received. Items.
Excuse me, Mr. Allen, I had a question about that, just that I was reminded. Have we seen a final report of the fire marshal regarding that incident out at Tyson yet?
I don't know, I don't.
Okay, I just wondered when it was going to be made available, or?
Yeah, I don't know, I can check.
Okay, thank you.
The items D, E, F, G, H, I, J are all part of, or I guess, all the way through N, are all monthly staff reports. If you've got, if you've got questions on any of those, staff's available to answer. If not, I'd just add an item that the pre-meeting today was ribbon cutting for the new trail in the north end of town. Pioneer Pathway, it was a little chilly, but a nice event, a nice turnout. We sure appreciate the partnership of the State Department of Transportation, as well as Livwell Finney County. That's a really nice addition to the community. I think it's also a reflection of good long-term planning. That trail was really first anticipated in a long-term comprehensive plan created in 2010 that anticipated a trail on the north end of town as far as our overall multimodal transportation plan for the community. And it's nice to see that a year before we embark on the next comprehensive plan, that an addition like that still happened. Sometimes in comprehensive plans, for the first two or three years, they have energy, but after that, they just collect dust. And so, yeah, it was kind of nice to do a ribbon cutting on one of the primary features of that comprehensive plan 10 years ago, when we get ready to embark on a new one. That's all the staff reports. There's some meetings of note. Any of those requiring an RSVP, please do those through C-LIN. And I think we're ready for item 9A. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2497-2019A.
I move that we approve appropriations ordinance 2497-2019A.
One second.
It's been moved and segmented that we approve appropriation number 2497-2019A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Might take one more aye, number two. Do you want it?
Do you want to, or you want to jump to?
We got a 1:30, we got about 10 minutes.
Well, let's start the other one then. I think we can handle 10C. Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve changes to amend the fire code in sections regarding fire suppression systems for mobile food vendors. There's a long preamble to that ordinance. But this is really kind of making, making work the direction that you had given staff earlier on food trucks and how those related to fire suppression systems. Carol?
Okay, so, back in November, this commission did hear the proposal for an ordinance for itinerant business license. At that time, it was discussed about the fire code and how that works with mobile food trucks. And so, we're here today to amend the fire code section, specifically the requirements in section 319 of the fire code. I just want to quickly go over it. So, we did meet together to gather all of the information and make the amendments, this proposed amendments, as we felt the commission would like to see. I'm just going to briefly go over the items. The first one in the number A, which is the general section, section titled "general." Basically, this just reiterates that special events are exempt from the fire inspections, the fire marshal's inspections. Number B, the permits required. This is basically removing or omitting this section, saying that there's not an additional permit required by the fire marshal for mobile food trucks. Section, or number C, the exhaust hood. In this one, we're omitting this section, basically saying that exhaust hoods are not required. However, in number D, the section titled "fire protections for cooking equipment," this states that if you do have a hood, you are to maintain it in working condition. And then, section E, that talks about fire extinguishers. This is where we put in, if you don't have a hood, then you are required to get a Class K fire extinguisher, which works for fire suppression in working with grease. And once again, I do want, I didn't mention this before, but this is just concerning the food trucks that have, that deal with the grease laden, that grease that makes the fires. I don't know the exact wording for that. Moving down to number F, we did delete all of these items. Basically, we're just addressing the fire issue. So, all of these items were deleted. And then, we did review this with our legal department. And after talking with our legal department, they did suggest some updates to the general language. So, the following updates are suggestions from the legal department. That ordinance title has extended, and that is because the one we had before didn't really match the 2018 fire code. And there's a lot of new words that were added into the 2018 fire code. So, that's why that's been extended. It's just to match our ordinance with the actual wording from the fire code. In B, there was some deletion of, in our old ordinance, we referred to the life safety code and the standard for portable fire extinguishers code, but that's all covered in the 2018 fire code. So, all of that language was removed. The legal department also removed some redundant language. And then, what you have in your packets, you should have the ordinance with items in green, which is the items that are new. And then, the red crossed out are the items that were eliminated. The options are you to approve this ordinance as proposed by staff, or you can make some changes. You can deny this ordinance, or you may table it. Staff does recommend item number one, or alternative number one. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's that ordinance number?
2857-2019.
I do have some questions. So, I'm still unclear, and I recall, I'm going back to our previous discussion about this, when we talked about inspections of food trucks.
Correct.
And it was, maybe that falls to KDHE, but what is the frequency of that, or how is that really done? And Mrs. Vivesca was here and kind of told her first-person account of being a food truck owner and how that works. So, even after reading this ordinance, and there is a section on enforcement, I'm still unclear as to how enforcement happens, if I don't know how inspections happen. So, if you could explain to me, who is responsible for inspections and how often, et cetera?
There is a code in the, in the fire code, there's a section, I should say, in the fire code. And it's not, it was not amended, so that's why it wasn't in here. But in that section, it does give the fire marshal the right to do inspections. It says frequent inspections. Our fire marshal has determined that that would be an annual inspection. And it's the same wording that is used for when we do the CMB license. Any other inspections that the fire marshal does is listed in this section. So, that refers to the mobile food trucks, since they've been added into the fire code.
My additional question is, why are food trucks exempt if they're at a special event? I don't see how the safety issue has changed in the nature of being present at a special event versus a, you know, regular business hour.
The reason why they were taken out is a lot of these special event vehicle, or mobile food trucks, when they go to a special event, they do have to register. When they register, that does go to the state. The state keeps track of them, and I'm not sure what number, but I think once they hit four or five events, they are required to get that inspection by the state. And it's basically the same fire inspection. But until then, some of them, you know, if this is the only event that they do once a year, we didn't feel that that was necessary for special events.
Do you think the safety issue is different?
Well, and the reason why we didn't think it was necessary is because after, like I said, it's something that the state keeps track of. So, once they hit that number, then they are required to have that inspection. So, if it's something that, you know, they go to different cities, they'll, they will be required to get an inspection, because it's something, when they register with us with special events, we check with the state. They have to know their name, their license number, and everything, so that that is up to date.
I guess my point is, whether someone goes to a five events or one event, their risk of having a fire, if they're cooking hamburgers or whatever, in my mind, logistically, seems like it would be the same. And in all of this, I agree, I want, I want to encourage food trucks and activity and special events and all these things. I just don't want to sacrifice the public safety, because I think so often, you know, in lots of discussions that we have, it's, well, they wouldn't allow this if somebody wasn't, you know, assuring it was safe for us. And God forbid, I don't want us to get to the point where there's four children that are standing outside a food truck and they have a fire. And then, we say, oh, yeah, well, they, they only came to one event, so we didn't check on it. That's my only point in this discussion.
Yeah, the chances of issues with fires, I mean, the way that we look at it is, we could have a food truck sitting in the same place, being there year-round, 365 days a year, and they would get one inspection. Whereas, the ones for special events, like I said, once they hit that number, the state does require. So, they're actually getting an inspection sooner than ones that are there year-round. But you're right, at a special event, we wouldn't do an inspection. That was the option, and that was the one that was chosen, not to do that inspection for special events.
It's 1:30. Shall we go to the hearing?
Yeah, we'll come back to 10C. Item 10A is 1:30. Item 10A is a 1:30 scheduled public hearing on the creation of a community improvement district. Upon closing the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider approval of an ordinance creating a community improvement district for NCKN Partners LLC, uh, for the remaining pad site number one. If approved, this would actually be ordinance number 2857-2019A, or, I'm sorry, 2857-2019. Melinda?
Uh, on your November 5th, uh, meeting, the governing body accepted the petition.
Just a moment, we need to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Open the public hearing at 1:30. Okay.
I'll give you a little bit of background here. On November 5th, the governing body accepted the petition to create a community improvement district, and also approved the first amendment to the Schulman Crossing to Development Agreement. Then on November 20th, the governing body adopted resolution 2832-2019, setting the public hearing for today, for the creation of the CID. Is there any questions? Uh, I do have Kristen, uh, from the Pulsonelli Firm. She's representing the developer, uh, of this project, if you have any questions for her. I'd like to introduce her.
Kristen Chikowski from Pulsonelli. Um, here to answer any questions, and I know this was discussed, um, a bit at your November 5th meeting, um, but this would be in particular for that northern section of the Schulman Crossing development, and hoping to finish out the inline development in the next, um, year or so.
You might describe where that is in Schulman Crossing.
Sure.
It's near to the north end.
Yep, it's the far north end, so it'd be just south of Sam's Club, and then just north, I think, of the Five Below, I think, is there right now?
Isn't there a road across there, I think, at the north side of that?
Um, I'm not sure it's a public road, but there is some access there.
So this is actually the last lot on that strip at Schulman Crossing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from commissioners? Not a, what?
Or the public?
Does anybody in the audience want to speak about this? Particular item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on ordinance 2857-2019.
I move that we approve ordinance 2857-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2857-2019. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back to item C. Finished discussion on that. Uh, just to note, if you happen to make a motion on approving this ordinance, it'd now be ordinance number 2858.
Eight, 2858. Any other discussion on this?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2858-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2858-2019, uh, regarding fire suppression systems and mobile, mobile food vendors, for mo- mobile food vendors. Uh, any further discussion, other than what's already been made? If not, uh, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
If you'd like, we can jump ahead to 11C, uh, and, and do the pool discussion. Since I know we've got a lot of people, uh, here for that, and then, um, following that, move to, uh, 10B, which was the smoking, uh, ordinance. Uh, item 10C, or 11C, I'm sorry, the governing body's asked to consider and approve a, one of the pool concepts designed by Confluence. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. I'm sorry, as I'm ushering in Terry and Doug into a chair, um, in the front row, so that in case you have questions from them, they can be readily available. I'm sure you guys remember Terry from your previous meeting this month. He is here with Confluence. And Doug, who was not here, um, at your last meeting, but who was here for your pre-meeting is with Water and Technology. Um, he was on the phone at your last meeting. And they are available for questions. So, I'm going to jump into the limited staff portion that has been added to your commission packet. When we were here at the last meeting, uh, essentially what staff told you we were going to do, um, was provide you with the information during the first meeting in December, and then we would be coming before you at this meeting, the December 17th meeting, and asking you all to make a decision on, um, the options that have been put before you and before the community. Um, since our last meeting, um, a couple of things have happened. We did put together a two-question survey, just like we told you we would. The first question was, um, asking the community to rate their most favorite, second favorite, and third favorite on the pool concepts, the renovation, replacement, A, B, 1, B2, C, and D. Um, and then also, in the same rating system, uh, most favorite, second favorite, third favorite, on the additional features that were kind of given to you in a, in a menu, if you remember, the Fly High, the Surf Simulator, that sort of thing. Um, so we ran those, uh, from December 3rd, um, to December 13th, um, and, uh, we had a lot of interaction on our Facebook. We had, uh, tons of comments. Our, uh, website got a lot of traffic during that period of time. We actually had 643 people complete the survey, which for 10 days is, is pretty incredible. Um, and what we did, when, when the results came out, we, um, decided that we would, um, allow a point system for each, so that we can include people's votes for their favorite, their second favorite, and their third favorite, so we could, we could put those all together. And so, the point systems that you see, um, included in your memo have the, um, point totals for all of the votes that, that a concept would have received from, um, most favorite, second favorite, lo- least favorite, or third favorite, however you want to, however you want to put it together. Um, and you'll see, looking at these numbers, that, um, concept D and concept C, um, which really, in, in the sense of aquatics, the aquatics features are the same, and so, um, those are, those each received, uh, very high votes. But when you pull out the, just my favorite votes, when you look at those, you'll see that concept D received the most my favorites, and the, um, renovation concept, the PVC liner, received the second most favorite, um, vote. So we wanted to point that out. Um, when you jump down to the features, you'll see that the Fly High received the most points overall, Surf Simulator coming in second, and then you'll see they kind of fall off from there, the Bull Slide, the Ninja Course, and the Climbing Wall. So in addition to, in addition to doing the survey, we also took this to the CIP group, which, um, took place on December 12th, and we, we asked them some of the same questions that we're asking you. We asked them to choose one of the concepts. We did not ask them most favorite, second favorite, third favorite. We said, you have to pick one. Um, and we did the same, then we went through and we had them rate each of the features, um, on a scale of most important to least important. And then we had them rate the, the fee schedule that was included with the Confluence package from Ballard King, which was a 543 concept. We had them rate how important it was to change that concept or modify it, um, before we open whatever the new facility is. So, you'll see the CIP group, there were, um, 22 people in attendance that night. They were all highly engaged. I had sent them packet materials beforehand. Um, I don't think I got a single hand that said they didn't read it. Um, so that's good. They were all, they were all excited, um, that they got to be part of this, and you'll see, from their voting, that the majority of them chose concept C, 10 out of the 22, and then eight chose concept D, out of the, the 22 that were there. And then we had a couple for B1 and B2. And then you'll see that when you jump down to their ratings for, um, the different added features, you'll see that the Fly High slide came in number one, and the Ninja Course number two. I do think that the Ninja Course got some more weight from the CIP group than, than the community group, and part of that was because, um, we did have someone from the Ruck Commission present at CIP, who talked about the value of competition on a Ninja Course, and how that could be programmed. And so I think the CIP group maybe got a different look than the community did in watching the video, and so that may be the difference in, in the votes of those. And then lastly, you'll see, we asked them about the importance of the fee structure, and you'll see, um, they felt that it was average or not important, um, that that fee structure looked different than the 543 that was, was given by the Confluence group. So, um, that is how that came out. They did have a few concept, or they did have a few comments that they wanted all of you to consider. One was that if you chose concept D, because at the time, we shared where the survey was at, even though it still had one day left, we shared with them the results, since that would be kind of where you all would be in this meeting. Um, they said if, uh, concept D was chosen, they would like you guys to consider repurposing the bathhouse, because they feel like it has value, even if you are going to build something new. Um, they want you to leave space to add more attractions. And what I gathered from this wasn't necessarily that they want you to add a lot of additional things, they want you to plan for the future. They want you to not, um, do this project and have it be a one and done. They want you to think long-term about what this means for the community. And so that was one of the things they want you, you to look at as you move forward. Um, and then they wanted you guys to also consider, and we did talk about it a little bit, because I had visited with Terry and Doug a little bit, about how different features might affect our insurance. That was something they wanted us to take into account. Um, and then the last piece was the, what I said about the Ninja Course, um, the ability to program and have competitions with the Ninja Course. So, then I included for all of you, um, specifically to each concept, the total cost, um, the debt service for each concept, and then what you would need to spend annual, annually after, um, the revenue that you made on expenses, and then what that total annual cost would be. And I wanted you all to be able to see this for the concepts and for the additional features, because I wanted you to be able to, to have in the back of your mind as you're making this decision, what it's going to cost us, um, to do any one of these concepts as you guys make your decision today. I am happy, from staff perspective, to answer any questions about any of this information or anything that we've provided over the last 16 months. Um, and I know both Confluence and Water Technology are happy to do the same, and I'm sure there's some other people here that, that would like to talk as well, so I'll sit down and let you guys move it through it.
Do we, do we want to speak to the insurance item? Why don't we talk a little bit about that, so we know?
What is your question regarding insurance?
Liability insurance, I guess, on some of these, um...
Added features.
Added features.
In terms of the added features, I mean, it wouldn't, um, from a risk management perspective, as long as this lifeguard is the same, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be outside the normal risk management of a normal operation of a pool, whether you went to a Ninja Course or a High Fly, or any of the other water slides or diving boards. They all kind of fall into the same category.
Okay. But we would probably have to add additional lifeguards to those added features?
The, the answer is, um, depending on which feature, um, like if you were adding the Ninja Cross, um, activity, um, you would probably shut down the diving boards at that time, potentially, and so your lifeguards would change from that location to the other location. That, I mean, that's one of the advantages of that type of a feature, as opposed to the inflatable type courses, because the lifeguards can't see underneath them.
So that's the one that comes up and down into the water?
Yes. And so, the High Fly, again, would be like another water slide, it's just different, and the loading would, you know, uh, there'd be a lifeguard at the top to dispatch people, and there'd be a lifeguard down below to be able to see their landing, and then let the, alert the lifeguard at top to be able to dispatch the nest rider.
Okay. Why don't we open it up, uh, to the audience? Do you, what?
I was just thinking about...
Oh, oh. Let me kind of go over a few things here. If you want to come and speak, we'd ask that you come before, uh, come up to the podium and, and state your name into the microphone, and that way we get it recorded, we know who, who's been here, and who spoke. So that's the only thing we ask, and, uh, if we can, just to speed things up, you know, don't repeat what somebody else has already said. So, uh, if you have something new and different, or something you want to address us, that's what we're here for, and we'll listen. Okay? Who would like to be first? Okay? Please come forward. Thank you. You want to pearl, pull that mic down a little bit?
Hi, Danny, and commissioners. My name is Joyce McGahay. My husband and I, Frank, had Tom's Tavern for 16 years. And if you know anything about Garden City, you've heard of Tom's Tavern, for whatever reasons. Ah, Randy, anyway. And Matt, I could go on, but anyway, uh, I'm here about the pool. The pool has been a big part of our life for years, for my mother-in-law's family, all of them. Uh, the thing I want to talk to you about is, Garden City needs to go back to having a free pool. It is a very marketable thing for the city of Garden City, and I think that, uh, it needs to, again, become the world's largest free concrete swimming pool. What a draw. Garden City should be a designated city to come to, and, uh, I think that there are so many things that you could do with the pool that have not been done, which would be good. I will tell you a little bit about myself. I've been head of my class reunion four times. We were in on the Ford Foundation Study with Don Stoll, which I don't know if any of you are familiar with, with IBP and all of that. Don worked for me, quite actually. And so, uh, I think that, that we need to address the fact that there are so many people in this town that don't have the money to spend $2 a person. When we grew up, we went every day, because it was free. Today, if there's five of you going, that's eight bucks. How many days a week can you afford to spend $8 to go swimming? You know, you can't do it. If your kids are playing ball, or whatever reasons, that's a lot of money. So anyway, I did, uh, check with the school district, and they have, uh, over 60%, well, they have actually 80% that are on the free lunches and everything else. Only 20% are paying for their meals. Well, obviously, then that tells you that there is quite a need for people who don't have money. I don't know what the figures are for the rec with the reduced, the ones that get, uh, the free deals to play softball in the summer, but I know there's a lot. So what we're talking about is economics, economics and marketing. Uh, I think that by not having it free and by charging it all, which was what it was meant to be in the first place, I think you're discriminating against people who really would be the ones to use this program, maybe far more than other people. We would not be in, in, uh, a, there would not be a problem with, like, the Parrot Co., because it's a private enterprise and it works all year round. The pool is not in contention with anything else in this town. Garden City could be a designated city because of the fact that there's the Windsor. If it would be fixed, the state could be a dinner theater, and we, good lord, need to do something with our softball program. Everybody goes out of town to play softball, because they made it so expensive. Nobody can afford to play here. If you don't believe me, check with who's ever in charge of it now. And I have a few things that I think might be kind of interesting to do with the pool. How about water polo? How about water polo teams? Nobody, nobody in Wichita, between Wichita and what, Denver, have water polo teams. How about synchronized swimming? These kids, when they live here and go to college, will maybe want to go into that. How about put the diving boards back in at the south end and teach kids how to dive? Maybe when they go onto school, might be something they want to do because of what they learned here. I did see synchronized swimming one time at the big pool. It was a team from Arizona, a college girls' team, coming through, I don't know where they were going, and they had a deal one evening on their way through, and it was the coolest thing I've ever seen. And that was, it was really good. How about swim meets? Why are we not having swim meets in the pool in the summer? You know? Why could this not be utilized? How about, you know, how, how about scuba diving? How about water safety classes? If you're in a boat and you fall out, what do you do? Can you swim? Well, maybe you swam in a little pool and you took two strokes. That's not swimming. Swimming is being able to swim across the pool to go to the deep end, for those of you who know. Uh, I just think that there's so many things. How about bathtub races, log rolling, and long-distance swimming? You know? Uh, these are something that have not ever been utilized. You know, these are something that have not ever been utilized, as far as I know. And I think that the kids in this town, if it's free, how about, I mean, I know they did the movie thing. But why not, you know, they could do all kinds of different things. They could do, you know, with inner tubes, there's so many things if it's free. And it needs to be marketed as a free pool. That is what I think. I think that, I just think that it's a shame to want to destroy it or to make it less than what it is. Because it is such a fantastic thing. Nobody has a pool this size, nobody. Not Dodge, not Liberal, not Wichita, Denver. No one has what we have. And we don't need to be Dodge and Liberal with all the water slides. Take the stuff out, don't charge, make it free. And I think that there are things that we could do in order to make the pool free and accessible for everyone, everyone in our town. Because if you don't, you're discriminating against a whole bunch of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the commission? Now's the time. Okay.
Hi. I'm Patrice Shelton. I think at the very least, it should be put to a vote to the taxpayers. This is quite an amount of money that the taxpayers will be needing to pay for. So I think that everybody should be able to have their voice in this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? How about our special guest here today? Want to comment? Hate to put you on the spot, but... Kids. State your name, please.
My name is Jack, and I just wanted to know why the...
Jack what?
Oh, Cokesel.
Cokesel.
Sorry. I just wanted to know why the indoor part of it was taken off of the, like what to vote about. Yeah, so if that could be answered sometime, I don't know who, but yeah. Thank you.
Jennifer, you want to say?
Okay, I'll do my best. So essentially where the concepts that came from that are before the commission today came out of your, essentially the visits that the consultants had to the community. They took that information and then coupled it with what you all told them at your pre-meeting on October 1st, which was what you wanted to try and accomplish, dollars you wanted to spend as close to possible as what we're currently spending, and then the things that you felt like you had to have out of that. And so Terry and Doug can tell you, in addition to what we currently are looking at, what it might cost to have an enclosed facility. But the discussions among the team was that that cost was well above and beyond what all of you were discussing for a concept. So I'll let one of them weigh in on that other piece.
Great question. Thank you, council members. You know, an indoor pool is a real positive for quality of life in a community, but it's also a very expensive component in terms of quality of life. And so one of the things when we were looking at the prioritization of it, it was to try to control not only capital cost, but also long-term operational expense. And so it seemed like the high school was one of the areas where there was going to be potentially an indoor pool in the future where they could use that as a component, not at the existing site. So that was one of the things when we went through a prioritization. I know that there was a lot of discussion with the swim team. We had a lot of participation out at the football game when we were out there and set up. And a lot of the high school students that were on the swim team and also the club teams came out to visit us and talk to us about potentially an indoor 50-meter pool. But again, when you start looking at the expense of constructing an indoor 50-meter pool and the long-term operational expenses, it becomes a very significant investment in the community. So that's where, in our last discussions, it was kind of taken off the table in terms of an option.
And I could speak to that a little bit. I mean, in other words, with an indoor pool, you've got humidity, you've got to de-humidify everything. And by the time you get it de-humidified, then you've got to heat the pool, which creates more humidity. So it's just a vicious circle and very expensive. And I think we've got somebody right here in town that could probably tell us how expensive it is to operate. And as a result, that's why it costs what it does to swim at Parrot Co. But I think at this time, why don't we, is there anyone else that wants to address this?
Can I make another statement? What we would like, what I would like would be...
Just a minute, just a minute.
What I would like would be some extra time. My granddaughter works for the Ingalls Shipyard in Mississippi. And I have got a number and I will be getting in contact with Navy personnel to see what they use for sealants. Obviously, if somebody can stop a leak or stop something from leaking, you would think that the Navy would know. And so I have been checking on this to see if it's even a viable aspect of it. There's got to be sealants somewhere that will seal that pool. There's got to be. With all the technology that we have in space and everywhere else, there has to be something that will seal that pool. And I don't know what the cost of it would be, but what are you looking at in terms of marketing the city and what it is? I understand there's a new business coming to town, I have no idea, but it's going to bring in a lot of families from what I've heard. And if that's the case, why can't, there's nothing for the kids to do that doesn't cost money. And I think the pool would really be something that would be good. And like I said, you know, I didn't even know you guys were doing all this until about a month ago. Because I don't take the paper, I don't listen to the radio, and it hasn't been on the Facebook stuff that I see. I am now on you guys' site. And I just think that people were not fully aware of what was going on. There's also an article in The Telegram today from Dewayne West, and you might want to read it because he has facts and figures. And you might read it, it makes a lot of sense to me. So thank you for letting me speak again.
I did read it over the noon hour.
What'd you think?
Well, he didn't have some of his facts right, but he...
He had some of them right.
He had some of them right. So...
My name's John Stanley.
Could you come forward?
Come forward up here and state your name. Because we're on Channel 8, we like to make sure everybody hears you. Is that on?
Yeah, it's on.
I don't know, is it?
It's on.
It's on.
All right.
State your name.
I kind of had a question for somebody up here.
State your name.
How did the survey that you hand out, or if I'm going to have a poll or something, I only ask the questions that want to make my goal there. So why wasn't there a question as, why don't we leave the pool the way it is? I mean...
There was.
There was. But yeah, could you state your name, just so everybody knows?
John Stanley.
Okay.
Yeah, there was renovation of the existing pool.
I understand that. And was it completed?
What?
Was it completed all the way through? Was...
No, it was costed out.
It was...
We have a cost for it.
Uh huh.
And it's...
$16 million.
$15 million is what? And you have to replace the liner. It was a complete liner, vinyl liner.
Uh huh.
And...
Well, the replacement of the existing pool to fix it, to build the same pool was over $22 million.
Yeah, but we're...
And to put a liner in it was the $15 million.
So what's your main concern right now with the pool the way it is? Is it because of water loss?
I personally have several concerns.
Yeah, there's lots of concerns.
The maintenance, the safety, the circulation of chemical. Yes, the water loss is incredibly irresponsible and unsustainable.
Do you know how much it costs to pump the amount of water you're losing?
Yes, we have all the facts and figures on it from Mr. Jones.
What does it cost to pump the water for the three months that you have the pool open?
So the Big Pool loses 32 million gallons of water every summer. The cost to the city, which is figured at a very, 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 very small rate, works out to be, the water plus chemicals, because we have to figure in chemical for that water loss, is $1,033 per day during the days that we are open. And we're open just over 100 days during the summertime.
So what portion of that is chemical?
Half. Half is water, half is chemical.
Huh?
Half is water and half is chemical.
Half water and half chemical?
Yeah.
I see. So the water cost, I mean, even if you figured a new well, like, you know, in this area is probably 200 foot to shale. Would probably cost somewhere around $40,000 because a 500-foot well I know costs $80,000 to drill just the hole. So if you take an irrigation well out here that pumps 300 gallons a minute, that would probably more than cover the amount of water that you use in a year.
The issue that we face is not necessarily the amount of water we need or whether or not that water is available. It's that most facilities use less than a million gallons because a million to maybe 2 million gallons. In a facility of our size, if you look at the renovation or the replacement concepts, those facilities, to fill them up and keep them full for the entire season is around 3.1 million gallons of water. And the current facility is using 32 million gallons. And so in addition to a cost, what the commission has looked at over the last 16 months is the impact that that has, 32 million gallons of water. And over, that's what we're using over three months.
Yeah, but 32 million gallon water in this area is not much water.
Yes, sir, but for what, the purpose that we're using it for, we're not irrigating a cornfield. I mean, we're trying to run a municipal pool. The other condition that we looked at was the children that were in the pool and the users of the pool aren't using the vast majority of that water. It's just there, but it's not being utilized in a good, efficient manner.
So where do you suppose that water is going? It's going right back into the aquifer.
Well, some of it is.
With chemical in it.
But the problem is, is the cold, in other words, we're losing water, we put new water in, it's cold. The temperature of that pool, people won't get in it unless it's 105 outside. And they won't get in it because it's too cold. Because we're pumping, constantly pumping new water in.
You know, we've seen attendance rates for people who are pool one-third the size of our pool. We're seeing attendance rates almost double the size of, double the numbers what we're seeing in the Big Pool. I mean, you know, I think in, you know, the Big Pool was used more and more but as it's aged and as there's been a lot of problems with chemicals and the aging of the equipment, unfortunately, the pool is becoming, it's not only an issue of water, but also an issue of safety. Right now, to renovate, we need a whole new filtration system, it's just not doing the job. The last several, last month of the Big Pool, I mean, the water, keeping the deep end even clear enough for lifeguards to actually use it safely in order for people to swim down there, it was becoming very hard to do. And so it's not just a water issue, but it's also a safety issue. The size of the Big Pool and what would take to renovate that to make sure that we're keeping people safe, being able to see the bottom of the pool is also something we took into account. And I think that we're asking too, and also I think the attendance. I, you know, I'm a Garden City kid, I swim in the Big Pool, you know, forever. And I love the Big Pool. And actually, the last four summers I've been able to work there's a lifeguard. And I'll tell you, the pool is an incredible resource. But unfortunately, what's happening with the Big Pool is it's not being used, it's not being utilized. And so what that looks like, and when we talk about a destination, I think we really have to consider, so what does that look like? And how can we really benefit our community? And again, I appreciate Mrs. McGahay, and I was at her establishment years ago. But you think about this idea of what that looks like, you know, as far as destination and bringing people to Garden City for something to do. And so with a pool this size, you know, we've looked at a lot of those things. Over 7,000 different types of people have commented. You know, if you think about, 17% of the voting population, people who could vote, voted in their last election, that was less than, you know, 4,000, 5,000 people. And I think our staff has went over and above getting, you know, comments. We've had over 7,000 individual comments on recommendations for the Big Pool. So I mean, as far as reaching out to people, I think that the staff has done a really good job doing that.
And that reaching out includes talking to all the kids from third grade up in Garden City. And so when we're looking at what was considered, I mean, it's what the kids say. I mean, that's the voice of the people that, when we're talking about who used the pool, it was the people in this generation that's saying, when I was a kid, I did this. And right now, those kids aren't using it. But we did, we talked to Jennifer Wint and talked to everybody and said, what would it take to use the Big Pool, to use that pool again? And these are the features that the kids now say they want to have it. So to say that everybody wasn't contacted, I don't think that's completely true because also it went on in the utility bill, the design, the initial step. And how long ago was that?
That would have been in June.
This has been a year process.
Right. So, but then when we're talking about what are we really trying to do here? It's what do kids want to see in a water recreation? So they get to have the opportunity to make the same memories. Because if they're not going to make the same memories at our facility, they're going to be making those memories somewhere else, in Long Branch or someplace like that. So like the other, like the water use is just atrocious. The repair costs are astronomical. The most expensive thing we can do is to maintain the Big Pool the way it is. It's either going to be the most expensive thing or the cheapest thing because it's going to be shut down within a year because it's going to be unfeasible to run anymore. Like literally will not be able to be run anymore because of the disrepair that it has. And not because it hasn't been repaired, but it's a 100-year-old facility. And so...
We did, you know, the pool, we're going to open it one more year. You know that.
All right. I was just wondering, the cost of this pool for the people that do use the pool?
Right.
What was your cost last year to use the pool? And what did the pool bring in for revenue last year?
So last year, we chose not to do any projects or any renovations. So we cut out about $200,000 that we would have spent to fix the chemical building and do some of the needed repairs, including the chlorinator. If you guys recall, we ran into an issue with it, we just cleaned it. We didn't add any new pieces to that. Our budget for last season was $500,000 and revenue was around 60, 65, maybe something like that.
It costs $2 to attend the pool and for the use of everything per day.
Per day? For, so...
Right in $60,000.
About $60,000 is what they brought in?
Right.
And we held down repair costs this year because we knew that this was going to be a big decision as far as where to go next.
Uh huh. So as your projections on 15 million, does that allow for interest and everything?
So that does. On each of the projects, if you look up at the board that's up there, we actually have not just 15 million because each project had a different cost. So the renovation concept was just about 16 million. The replacement is just about 23 million. Concept A is just under 8. And so we actually concepted out each one of those, what the debt service would cost, and that does include interest. And then we have the expenses and revenue for each of the different concepts and kind of what the difference between those would be and what the annual cost would be. And you can see those for each of the different concepts. And then you see what the total annual cost is for each of those concepts as well.
Is it over the life of the, are you going to do a bond or...
Right.
Right, right. So John, the DS would be the debt service, that's the annual payment, plus a negative expense, plus a revenue. So that's a net loss number to show the AC is an annual cost. So that's a projected annual cost over a 20-year bond, which makes a little more sense for replacement costs in Concepts A1, B1, B2, C and D. Actually, on the renovation concept, I think if the... Actually, on the renovation concept, I think if the commission were to head in that direction, we'd need to have a serious conversation about whether or not it makes sense to do a twenty-year debt service on a liner that only has a maximum ten-to-fifteen-year life. But this was really an attempt to make an apples-to-apples comparison of annualized costs. So, DS is a bond and interest, a principal and interest payment on a bond. And E minus R is really a, you could look at that as a net loss number. So, you plug those two things together and that makes your budget. And those, that's an all-in, expense and revenue net loss number.
Where's the total cost for the twenty years?
It would, it, it, straight line, no net present value or anything like that. It would be this, the annual cost times twenty.
And the annual cost again was what?
Well, it depends on which concept we could pick, the-
So, the commission, there, there isn't, there isn't a thing right now, I mean, these, this is-
We haven't picked any-
A breadth of options of what to do with the pool moving, or what to do with aquatics at Pennap Park. Period. Uh, it, all the way from renovation to new concept with a lot of bells and whistles. So, they've got these seven concepts plus, uh, I believe, five add-ons that they could or could not consider doing.
So, uh, have you considered, uh, the staffing and the chemicals?
Yes.
Yeah, everything is-
Everything is in there.
Everything is in there.
That's in that, that's in that E, E minus, that, that, E minus R is really the net operating loss number, uh, taking into account all of the expenses, whether it's chemical, whether it's, one of the bigger pools might have, need twenty lifeguards on duty, one of the smaller options might need fifteen lifeguards on duty. All that's taken into consideration.
Yeah, well, probably sixty years ago, I swam in that pool. And it was cold.
Very cold.
I survived.
Yeah, they-
How many, uh, I'm just curious, how many people, uh, I'm sorry, uh, let me ask a question. Okay. Uh, on your, uh, thing that you sent out, whatever it was?
The survey?
The survey.
The most recent one?
Uh, was there not, how come there wasn't a question on, would you rather leave the pool the way it is?
Because when the commission had their meeting in July, they actually voted to not, they already made that decision. So, that was no longer on the table. So, the meeting in July that we had, the commission was asked whether or not they wanted to close the big pool at the end of twenty-nineteen, if they wanted to extend it beyond and for how long beyond after that they wanted to extend it. Um, or if they just no longer wanted to offer water, water aquatics at all in Garden City because of all the issues that we were facing with the big pool. And they took a vote, um, I would have to go back and look, I don't know if it was the first, I think it was the second meeting in July. Um, and they chose to, they felt like they wanted to give it one more season because they wanted people from all over to come and have an opportunity to go again. But they also made the decision that if anything serious were to come up that prevented, uh, that was going to cost, uh, major capital expense, that, um, the pool would close at that time, whatever timeframe that was.
I see. So, the decision's already been made?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, to do something, the decision has been made. Now, we're presented with all of the options of what, what, if we did something, what could we do?
Right, because at that time, well, sorry, go ahead.
Unless we got a money printing machine, this is an awful lot of money to spend for aquatics in Garden City.
We've been-
I mean, I'm, I'm a taxpayer.
Yeah, we've been spending this money for, we've been spending half a million dollars for-
Actually, a little over.
A little over that for years.
Per year.
On the pool.
Just in maintenance and-
So, we're spending it already.
Expenses. So, some of this will be, you know, offset.
And that's what I was going to say, is that the decision that happened before about, do we need to do something? And yes, is because we didn't want to get to the situation where we back ourselves into that sixteen million dollar cost by accident, by not taking the proactive steps to say, "We need to address this now" because we were getting hit with six-hundred thousand dollar repair bills after six-hundred thousand dollar repair bills, and it fixes something, but then something else goes, then something else goes. And if we didn't take that step at that time to say, "We need to do something about it", we would have been, ended up at sixteen million dollars, and we would have still the low attendance, we would still have the, the poor facilities compared to, to other facilities, and, and we wouldn't have anything to show for it. So, that, that step back then to get us to where we're at now was to make that conscious decision that we want to make sure we take control of the future of the, the aquatics so that we can make wise economic decisions and make wise decisions for our community.
There was about three-hundred thousand dollars that we were going to need to spend right away just to bring the facility back up to, to be able to, um, to paint the open and, you know, we need to paint the, paint the deep end, you need to replace the, the chemical, um, all of the chemicals, the machines or the filtration system. And so, you know, there's a lot of the cost, and we said, "Hey, let's, let's take a look before, let's plan before we move, move ahead." Otherwise, you become reactionary rather than proactive. And so, we were really just reacting to whatever problem came up next. And, I mean, I think that's something that, you know, as a commission, that was, we said, "Let's be proactive, what would that look like?" And so, the process, I mean, that's been going on for a year, has been a very proactive process. And so, hopefully, gaining as much attention and as much input as possible.
Okay. So, is the community behind this as far as, as, uh,
Depends on who you talk to.
Right, exactly.
Well, exactly, I mean, uh-
I haven't heard from any community members who say, "We don't want a community pool."
Right.
No one has said, "No pool." Everyone has a different opinion about what it should be. But that's why we tried to reach out to children who are users, families, people moving to the community. People, you know, what would make you use the pool more? The temperature's a huge thing. Why don't, why don't we have more sw- swim meets and those kind of things? Well, we don't have the right facility for that, you know, and we've heard again and again and again. So, we are trying to meet those things that you are saying you want. You want to have a drawout of the community. That looks different than it did a hundred years ago. Other, other communities don't have a pool this large because we can't maintain responsibly that large body of water. Not in a safe way. There was algae growing in it this year, we had to scrub it off with magic scrubbers. So, no, truly, I mean, the, these are the things that we were confronting. And for the users of that pool, we want it, and I, and I take Ms. McGonie's point about it needs to be accessible for kids. It needs to be, it needs to be a cost, um, you know, uh, that is available and make it accessible. That's why we're doing this. We want a good facility for the community. The community says we want a good facility, but we have impossible math to deal with because we have to make a responsible decision, thinking about the next twenty years of what that operating cost is going to be as well, and yet still know that we're going to have to subsidize it because to maintain that, really, if we were going to balance that expense and revenue number, we'd have to be charging five, eight, ten dollars a head. And we know we're not going to be able to do that because it wouldn't, it would therefore kill our goal of being able to make it accessible. So, we're trying to find a nice middle ground that meets the majority of what people are telling us they want and still make it something that really serves the mission of a good quality facility for the community. And then, if it draws more people in as an attraction, that's just frosting on the cake.
We could also, I mean, there's all different options. We, there could be scholarships for people just like, uh, you know, school lunch menu, you know, school lunches. I mean, there's a lot of different, uh, possibilities there. But we've got to charge something if we're going to provide this kind of a facility.
Right, but, I mean, the pool now is accessible to everybody because you created the city bus system.
Right.
So, they can surely get there.
That's why we're leaving it where it is. I mean, there was some discussion about moving it to a different location and-
Couple of different locations.
But we've got that, that bath house, I mean, that's been there, I don't know, since what, nineteen-twenty-two, I think?
The pool's been there since twenty-two, the thirties.
Thirty, yeah, thirties, so, and that's, that, uh, bath house can be a tornado shelter, actually. It's, it's well-built, it's still a solid structure. And, you know, that's something I think we can, can renovate. And, um, the addition of a building would just be a small building there on, on, uh, the east side, or west side, excuse me, of the existing building. But, the thing is, people, uh, like the high school age kids, they don't go down there to swim. It's a social interaction, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't, you don't go down there to, to swim, uh, laps around that pool. I mean, so, you know, they want to go down there and have some fun and meet their friends. And now, if you talk to, you know, third graders, well, it's a little different. Uh, you know, they want the shallow end where they can walk around and, but, there's, we've got such a huge body of water that it's, it's hard, in this day and age, it's hard to maintain. And you can't afford to heat it, so, basically, you know, you use the sun and you chlorinate it and filter it. But we're adding so much water that it's cold. And, uh, I mean, when I was a kid, I've been here since nineteen-forty-eight, and, uh, they drain it every two weeks, and they didn't have any filtration. When the slime got pretty thick, then they drain it and take a fire hose and clean it, and then they would, uh, fill it back up. And it'd be ice cold for two or three days or a week, and then you had about one week to swim. I didn't swim much.
Would it be useful for our, our designers to talk a little bit about the technical challenges of the pool as it is and the PVC liner? Because I know that has been brought up now in a couple of different things and how we've talked about that as part of that renovation concept, and they can talk about the technical aspects. And, uh, Mr. Allen alluded to kind of the lifespan that we are, we're not sure about that as a, as a potential fix. If you guys could speak about that, that might also answer some of your questions, sir.
Well, it's a cost that is outstanding on this for the people that use the pool. The cost per person is quite high for any of the options.
Well, even the current option, even what we're doing right now is extremely, and it's getting worse. That's the prob, that's where the commission's at. The cost keeps increasing exponentially for us, and we're not even, we're not even covering the capital cost to keep it well-maintained. That's where, that's where the commission's at, that's why the commission made the decision in July to do, come to this decision where we're at right now. Because it's just, I mean, it's either that, or like what Commissioner Dick said, I mean, last season, we had, we were coming to the decision of closing the pool and just draining it and leaving it where it's at because of all of the maintenance costs and the maintenance issues that we had. And so, we're at this point now, to, I mean, we made the decision in July, and we're at this point now, after a year and a half almost of discussion and interviews and surveys, we're now trying to make a decision on trying to move forward. The pool will be open next year during the season as it is now. Uh, hopefully-
For as long as-
For as long as it stays mechanically feasible to stay open. And then, uh, whatever decision we make here, then hopefully, it'll be open by twenty-twenty-one with the new design, the new, new design phase of where we're at, on whatever option the commission decides. Because right now, it's not, it's not sustainable for us. And if we keep going like we are, you know, the commission is pretty much going to say, "Just close it and leave it as is without having a water aquatics park."
And we recognize that these are tax dollars, and there are a segment of the population who say, "Hey, I don't want the additional taxes, and I don't want to support water recreation." But there are, from, from what we've heard, almost a pe, there are a huge section, and I think a bigger part of the population is saying, "We want water recreation in Garden City, Kansas." And so, I mean, that's the, so you're balancing both of those points of view. And so, I think that's, and I mean, I appreciate that you've made that point of view, that it's really this, the idea about the taxes and, and so, started talking about the water and that's not a big deal. And, and so, but I, I think for a lot of people that the water is the big deal, and that's part of, part of a lot of the issues. And so, um, I mean, I appreciate the, your input, and I mean, that this idea of what that looks like next. And we realize that these are real dollars, that these are real costs. And I think that's why we spent a year and a half and had so many points of contact and worked so hard to get as much information, best information that we could to make sure and answer all the questions, including the questions that Mr. West asked in his, in his, um, in his, his several articles. He's asked the same questions, and I've had conversations with him, and I count him as a friend. And we've talked about these same issues, and again, this idea of when you ask questions and when someone gives you the answer, that's the answer. Just because you didn't like the answer, doesn't mean you asked a question again. It's, that, that's the problem, is that these questions, the information's available, and now we're at the point of decision.
I see. Well, it ought to put it on the ballot. And let the taxpayers vote on it.
Let's, do you want to talk about the, uh, cost of renovation, I guess?
Hello, Doug Woodacre with Water Technology. Um, basically, we've studied the, um, options, and, and one of the things that's incredible about this commission is that you guys have done such a great job with public outreach. A lot of, a lot of places that we've worked, um, don't have as much public input. And there's still more to come, depending on what your decision is today. So, one of the important things we heard from the community, that how important the big pool was. And that's why there's two options on here. One is to, um, just rip the exact pool out and place it, replace it with an exactly brand-new big pool that's exactly the same. That's the most expensive option. The other option is, is, uh, kind of a, an option that would use the best technology and sealants. But it's just not the pool shell that's leaking, there's all the plumbing around the pool, all the equipment that has to be replaced. So, even though if we, if we did reline the pool, sealed it so it doesn't lose as much water, um, and it becomes much more efficient to operate, you have a, the big pool, that lining system has about a ten-to-fifteen-year lifespan on it, and it is going to have to be replaced. So, we have looked at that option. The other thing that we have to look at is, in all facilities, there's a, uh, two kind of lifespans. One is a service life of, you know, how long the equipment lasts, how long the concrete shell lasts, and all those types of things. But the other thing is, market conditions change. What was appealing when I was a youth doesn't necessarily appeal to today's youth. And so, it's really important to look at what today's youth are looking for in their recreational. Because if, if there's not stuff that, or items that appeal to today's youth, guess what? Guess what? They're not going to come. And so, there's no sense in having it if they're not going to come. So, we want to make sure, whatever decision you guys, you know, we wanted to provide options for the, for the council members to be able to look at what are these types of options that will appeal to today's youth and future, um, uh, consumers to be able to, and that's one of the things I know Jennifer and her team did, was going out to the schools and really looking at what, what do people see in their other, their travels to see other types of facilities that they would like to see in Garden City, so they don't have to go to other places to get those types of amenities. So, that's the other thing, that market appeal, having a, a, a more consolidated, uh, pool that has more, um, amenities that provide greater market appeal.
So, I'm curious of, uh, I'm just wondering about the people who are here in the last, so the city's been running the pool the last three years, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the Recreation Commission ran the pool before that. I'm curious about those who are here, and you don't have to answer if you don't want to, have been, who have been to the pool since the city has taken over running it in the last three years. Has there been many people that have been to the pool?
Four, five, six.
Doing everybody I was there.
Yeah, I ju, I'm just curious, so, I mean, because I think, I mean, there's been a lot of, I mean, I think the city has done a really good job of, 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 you know, making sure that we continue the, the recommission's opportunity to, I mean, they did an excellent job when the city took it back over. So, I'm just curious about how many people have been to the pool and seen what the pool is like recently, just so that we have kind of have a good idea, so, thank you.
Randy, do you want to speak to the issue about trying to put something like this on the ballot in the, in the past history of trying to do that and what the timeline might look like, this process?
I think that the commission could decide, uh, to authorize a referendum, and it probably would be non-binding, because you are the elected officials and you have the authority to decide a particular issue. So, that probably would be a ninety-day process. I'm not sure if it has to wait for a, a general, regular general election, or you can have a special election. You've got costs associated with that if that's what you were to do, but there is a process. I think one other time, there was a request to put the issue of, uh, smoking in public or in, in- in buildings and businesses on the ballot, but it wasn't properly done and it wasn't authorized. The, I think the county clerk didn't find that there were sufficient votes or signatures on the petition. So there's a statutory procedure that can be followed.
Well, I guess it's.
And, and let me finish. There is a way for, for citizens to initiate that process by the signing of a petition that strictly complies with the statute. Because if it doesn't, it won't be accepted. But that, those that are interested could go seek legal representation and proceed that manner. And if it's done properly, the issue as it's strictly set out in the petition would have to be put on a ballot. And I, I think that probably is binding if it's done by citizens as opposed just to something that's a show of hands.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm, as, as Mrs. Shelton brought that up, I, I wondered what additional information do we gain from a ballot vote versus the massive surveys and the community input and all of the surveys that we've done trying to, to gain the opinion of so many people across the community? I mean, directly going out and asking folks. So we put it on a ballot, we know that we don't have wonderful voter turnout.
Well, and you don't have young people, I mean, people under 18 can't vote.
So, so we have a, then a slice of the community, and it is maybe taxpayers, but registered voters who are going to turn out and make this decision. Is that a more palatable situation than the input that we've already tried to obtain? And I guess that's my question is, is do we think that is the way to go about this or not?
One thing that hasn't been brought up is, you know, for the last, I've been on the commission nine years and I think, Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, what did we raise the mill levy? Less than 1%?
Since 2009, you've gone up a half a mill average for over 12 years.
So, you know, we haven't really raised your taxes from the city standpoint in the last nine years. And we don't know if the next commission will raise, if this does go through, what they'll raise it, maybe they won't. I mean, one mill raises what, 214,000? $1,000, one mill. We raise you 1 mill. So your taxes are going up because of school, college, county. Those are, but the city hasn't raised your taxes. And if you, if you compare Garden City with all the other cities our size, we're, we're pretty low, actually. And that financial statement, 2020 financial statement, we've got copies of it here. You need to look at it. And we, I mean, you know, I pay taxes too, we all do. I don't like to pay them any better than you do. So I've tried to hold that mill levy every time I've voted on it, to keep it as low if, and not raise it. And so, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job of holding your taxes down. So whenever I hear that, I, I, you know, you're not, you don't understand it, basically, because we haven't raised them as far as the city goes. So I just want to make that clear, but I guess, does anybody else have anything? Okay?
I just have a question.
All right.
My name's Jeanette Brungart. I don't know what A, B, and C, and D is, so where do I go to see what those concepts are? So I know what you're, you know? And my other question was, then with all these concepts, you're, you're saying we're gonna stay at the pool that we have now, but maybe just do something completely different there? Or you're moving it somewhere?
Same location.
That's what the community said, that they wanted to stay in the same location.
Same location, okay. I think that would be great. And then I want, one more and then I'm gonna let you talk.
And then I'll try and answer your question. You said one, so I was like, I'll get in there after that.
I came here today as, we need that pool to stay because that's what I'm used to. Well, us older people need to realize, times changing, kids changing what they want. So now I am more in favor of a change, but I do think, yes, it needs to be at the same place because I think that's a good draw for this, the zoo. The zoo is a wonderful place. And a lot of people go down to the zoo, then they'll go swimming or, you know. So, okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'm gonna start with your first question. This is the city's web, website. And if you go to just our homepage, we've created a link where you can get to all, all of the pool information. So everything we've done since day one on this project, you can just click on our homepage and go to learn more. And then it's gonna take you, and Matt, if you scroll all the way to the bottom of this page, you'll see where the concepts are listed and their hyperlinks. If you click on those, it'll actually take you to those different concepts. And it'll show you a picture and it'll just show you all of the information that the consultants have put together on site plans and architectural fees. And, and then we've also included a few videos on there of some of the additional concepts that they were talking about as possible inclusions to any of the facilities. So that's my answer to number one about where to find information. Your question, number two, when this process first started and we went around and started visiting schools and community groups last January, we spent about eight weeks visiting every classroom from third grade to 12th grade. And then we also tried to get in front of every civic group. I did a bunch of ladies groups, anybody who would let me talk to them. And I asked them what things were important. And so out of that, we found that it was highly important that that location, even though it may not be where the majority of kids are living today, back when the pool was built, that was the case. There were a lot of kids who lived really close to that. So we thought, well, maybe somewhere else might be better. But when we went and talked to people, they felt like that location because of the zoo, because of the parks that are there, the ball field, all of those things really had that draw to have the pool facility there. So when the consultants started doing concepts, all of their concepts are in that same location.
Thank you.
Matt, could you go to the front page of our website? Right quick, just, and to, just to add another bit of information, if you go down to the bottom, Matt, keep going all the way to the bottom. If you go to the YouTube link there, it's the red one that he's highlighted, and click on that, the last board meet, or the last board meeting, the last commission meeting actually had all of that information that they discussed in detail on each one of those. So you can watch the last board, last commission meeting. Got too many, got too many meetings going on. You can watch, you can watch the last city commission meeting and they go through every concept step by step, how much it costs, what, what it looks like, how it would, how it would fit the footprint of where the pool stands now. And you can watch that and get that information. Because that was at our last city commission meeting.
And I think the thing that's been really neat about the whole process is this has been a really, a positive process. And I mean, getting the community involved in something that matters to all of us. And so the overall process, I think, has been extremely positive. And the opportunity to bring a quality-of-life aquatics facility and whatever that looks like, has, I mean, I've been really excited about the input. I think the thing about cost is, I mean, the cost is always something that we're gonna have to talk about and that we're gonna have to really weigh. And, and I think that we've done everything we can, and the staff has done everything they can, to really think about, so what do these costs look like? And what's that gonna cost? And so they've tried to think of everything. And when we hired Confluence, they really understood that the, the big pool is something that means a lot, not only to us as commissioners, but you as a community and, I mean, the whole community and people from all over. I mean, when, if you've been in Garden City, the big pool has touched your lives. And so having the process be really positive and really, with the one thing, the reason we chose them, one of the big reasons why I voted for them is that they wanted to honor our history. And, and so we are here today making a new history. Garden City, I, I don't want to be Dodge City, I have a lot of friends in Dodge City, I like that, I don't want to liberal, same thing. But Garden City is, I want to make something great for our city. And so having water recreation and an aquatics facility that not only is, is environmentally responsible, but also a blast to be at and has tons of people, it's a lot of fun to swim with 1,000 people rather than 200 people. And our, our pool can hold over 4,000 people if, if on a day if we, if we'd have, at 4,000, we'd have to turn away people. But when you have 300 people on average showing up and you're looking at, so why is this not, why is this not attracting in bringing people in? And so the thing that's exciting is, is the process has been really exciting and really positive. And so we're answering a lot of the hard questions and I think they've been there. And, but I, I just want to, I want to say, I've had a lot of fun talking with the community and having so many opinions about lots of different things. But the overall thing is, is we want Garden City to have something that really benefits our community. And what that aquatics facility looks like, that's really for us all to decide. And I think we've brought all the information together to make a great decision. It's all available on the website, but yeah, this has been a year and a half process to come here down today, December 17, 2019, so.
And we've kind of, sorry, we've kind of beat around the bush a little bit, but I think it's important to say, to be clear on what the costs are to the taxpayers, the most expensive thing will be to do nothing. I mean, unless we shut it down, then it's free. I mean, we can shut it down and then nobody can use it, but that's not an option. I mean, not a realistic option. The most expensive thing we can do is just keep it the way it is and keep on patching it for the next 20 years. The second most expensive thing for our taxpayers will be to do something that's either a complete replacement or a renovation, especially when we're talking about not just cost, but cost for use, how many people are using it. The best thing we can do for water recreation for our taxpayers is to choose one of the new remodel that uses a better efficiency on water, does a better job with our chemicals, does a better job with our, our lifeguard systems and is set up to be able to last a long time, that, that's more appealing to the kids so that more kids will be using it. So when we're talking about costs and stuff like that, we do need to recognize that the less, the least burden for our taxpayers is to do one of those options A through D. That, that is the, that is the wise fiscal choice.
And I think we've talked a lot about kids and said kids because so many of the users are children. But when we look at these facilities, I think it's important, and what I would love to see is a facility that people can use across their lifespan. Because to have swimming available and, and programming available for people of all ages is gonna be a great health benefit. That's one of the most positive things we can do to impact our, our community in a positive way from, from, from this side of the day. So I, I look forward to that. And as we looked at the, the lazy river configurations and at our pre-meeting, talked about some of the programming with exercise that could go with that, things I hadn't even thought of, so many of the sports that we haven't been doing, so many of the, the meets and those kind of things. If we just plan for that and then as those ideas come, as those interest groups come, as that demand comes, we can accommodate it. Right now, we can't accommodate a lot of those things.
One thing that doesn't show on, on these different concepts is the, you know, shade. That was one thing. Can you talk a little bit about that? I mean, we can't show everything. This is a preliminary drawing, but that was a big item for people down there.
Sure. Terry Bergbiger with Confluence. And Mary, thank you for letting somebody besides Doug talk for a change. Get my own words in here. So you gave me the opportunity. So yes, shade, all of these concepts include shade throughout. Shade over seating areas, some shade actually over some of the, the water play areas. That was one of the number one things we heard from the community that needs to be incorporated, as well as shade at a concession area. So you have an ice cream cone, maybe the whole thing doesn't melt before you finish it. So yeah, shade will be provided throughout. The other thing that I would mention is, for everyone's benefit, the design, whatever is chosen to do today, if you make a decision, is not finished by any means. Essentially, what we have done to date is identify a scale and a scope, sort of a, a framework of what features the community would like to incorporate. Because for us, that's how we can start to give you some information on cost and configuration. But moving forward, there will be more opportunities for the community to engage with us as we start to tell that story about the history. And how can we work that story into the character and the theming and interpretive elements even, or just what this place becomes that carries on that message of the big pool or of Garden City? Whatever the community wants us to tell, that process will happen from here forward. So it's sort of, you know, you buy a house, you know how many rooms. Eventually, you start to pick the paint colors and the drapes. That's what's coming next, so.
What, you might talk a little bit about if, for instance, this concept C, utilizing the existing building for showers and restrooms. If we wanted a future building, say, for, for that down the road, could that, that could be fit in there to the east of that little building?
Sure, so, oh, go ahead.
We might want to keep that bill, I mean, you know, just to tear that building down would be several thousand, hundred thousand dollars. But it's such a good building, I mean, we could use it for party rooms down the road if we wanted to or a lot of different things. But, so I don't think, at least from my standpoint, I don't, I don't want to see that building go.
Right.
There's no sense of spending money to tear it down. And you do have a lot of contingencies in these numbers, like 25%? Something like that?
Yeah, it's, it kind of varies depending on.
So we've got some flex in here a little bit, I mean.
So what I would say about the building is, concepts C and D are essentially the same, except for a different approach to the bathhouse. Concept C says, let's keep the existing bathhouse, reconfigure it and update it to modern standards, which essentially is completely gutting it and rebuilding it inside to make it modern bath facilities. And then adding on a separate, smaller building to the east as it shows there for ticketing, admin, you know, some additional storage, concessions, things like that. So that would be the concept C. Now, concept D, as it shows here, would be all new building, but that new building could be positioned in a way that you don't tear down the existing building. Because, yeah, I, I think we agree that it wouldn't make sense to tear it down when you could potentially save it as an asset. Maybe it doesn't get renovated with this project. Maybe in the future, it could be renovated into something that is a, a useful civic building. In some of the earlier concepts, we talked about how some of that space could be a meeting room or a teen room or something that could even complement the pool. Could be party rooms, rental space, so someone could have birthday parties, corporate parties, things like that. So I, the, the final location of a future building could easily be adjusted and that's part of the design phase that's yet to come, as we work through really what your, what your priorities are for that.
Okay. I think, is, anyone else want to speak? Or forever hold your peace? No?
Please.
We can, I don't know, do you, do you want to go around the commission and talk a little bit? Do you have?
I think we've, we've stated everything we said.
Everything's been said?
Well, yeah.
We've addressed specific designs and stuff like that.
I did want to talk about though, there, there have been swim lessons are taking place and we have a great partnership with the recommission and they've had for, I mean, so many years. So swim lessons still take place and they're, they're very low cost or no cost, there's lots of scholarships offered. I also wanted to talk about swim meets, there are swim meets that take place at the pool. So a lot of these things, I mean, just because you've not seen them or been attendance, doesn't mean that they're not happening. And so there are a lot of things that are happening at the pool that you might not be aware of, you know, and because it's not something that's advertised or that you've not had time to go down to the pool. But there are some incredible things that are happening at the pool. And, and I would encourage you, no matter what, I mean, in 2020, the pool's gonna be open for however long, I mean, spend some time reminiscing, make sure you go when it's a little bit warmer, you know? And so, I mean, the thing that's really exciting is that it is still a viable pool and there are things that are really happening that are very positive. And so to act like that the pool hasn't been maintained or there aren't things happening, I don't, I don't want that to be, act like that's the case. It's not the case. There have been some really neat things happening. They have an incredible set of lifeguard staff that work really hard to make sure that people, I mean, I've met people from all over the United States who have stopped in and wanted a place to swim. They had no idea that we had a, this big of a pool. But you know, that's the thing. So I want to make sure that it is a draw, but there are some really exciting things that are happening, so.
Okay, does anybody want to talk about it? Your, your favorite?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Let's talk, let's talk. I get the feeling that we're, we're talking about C or D concept, is that? Is that what, the general, somewhere in between C and D?
Yeah.
That's, that's where, that's where I'm leaning, heading towards. Go ahead.
I'll just make a motion and then we can, we can either vote it up or down and then move on.
move on.
Oh.
Sound good? I mean, we can talk about the concepts, I mean, we've talked about the concepts.
We'll do it.
That'll move, that'll get the meeting moving along here. I'll make a motion, we approve concept C with the additions of the Ninja Course and Fly High Slide to the concept.
I second his motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we use concept, you said C?
With the, with the additional, uh, features of the Ninja Course and Fly High Slide.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah.
Lindsey's second.
Seconded, okay. Now we'll open it up for discussion.
The only thing I would like to add, and I don't know if you can officially add in this thing, but I want it to be known, I would really like to see a master plan designed when we're talking about adding in a new bathhouse and how that would look. Not doing it now, but, so like the zoo has that, I mean, we know where the, where the direction of the zoo is going for the next 20 years, the next 25 years. I'd really like to see that with this, so that we have a built-in, this is where we're going, this is the kinda infrastructure we need in the northwest corner. We, we need to make sure, we need to think about running something over there, because in 10 years, we're gonna be adding, whatever, the bull slide, or, or the surf simulator, or something like that, so.
Or parking for all the people.
Or parking for all the people. So it'd be really nice, even though we can't add all the different things that everybody wants right now, to include a master plan. And I don't know if that's a motionable thing, or if we can just direct staff to kinda work on that as we go.
Well, we haven't, even if we pick one of these, I mean, they've gotta finalize the design.
Right.
Well, I like that, I like the idea of that.
There's some more, yeah, there's some more, uh, planning that has to go into this. One, one thing, um, just for clarification, this would include, the concept C does include a 50-meter, uh, swim lanes. It's, uh, it has, uh, a lazy river and some slides and, uh, zero entrance.
Splash park?
Keeps splash park.
Splash park for smaller children.
Still has a smaller recreation pool.
And we keep the existing bathhouse.
Mm-hmm.
And then we add a small concession building to the west side, and that would, uh, you'd still enter from the north side. Uh, the, and the, uh, the 50-meter pool does have some fixed seating on one side.
Yeah, can you pull the concept up just so we can confirm?
And it also does have diving boards, I know.
Yeah, there's a diving pool at the end.
Look, there it is.
No, I was just gonna say, so the seating, that's why we wanted to check. The seating would be, um, probably tip and roll. Don't know that we need to spend the money building in permanent seating.
Permanent, yeah.
But it's a place that can accommodate it.
Aluminum type.
Yeah, something like that.
We were discussing this last meeting, this was a, a pretty good design to accommodate swim meets.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to some of the, the, the design A and B where we can kinda separate out this, that, this, that into the pool.
Correct.
To be able to accommodate, uh, more meets that way, right?
Correct. Yeah, I did appreciate being able to use the actual other, the recreation pool and then do the swim meets at the same time, and so that might attract additional.
So, if this passes, then you would bring us back a, uh, a drawing with all the additions and?
Yeah, so, if this were the direction you, you know, if this were the direction we were given, yeah, we would, um, our next step would be to kinda go through a full design process, um, schematic design through developing construction engineering documents. Um, but as a part of that schematic design, if, if you want to do more of a master plan, that can be done at that time as well. So, looking at sort of the future addition locations so that, um, and then we can give you the, you know, kinda the cost impact of if you wanna accommodate that for putting in infrastructure, you know, phase one or anything like that. Or, you know, there's just additional options like that to be considered as a part of that future planning.
You could make an amendment.
Why don't you, uh, talk a little bit about the process, in other words? Uh, the working drawings, and then we're gonna close, at the end of 2020, the existing pool would be closed.
Correct.
And hopefully, we'd have, what, bids?
Yeah, so.
Taken?
Um, so we, our next step would be to work with staff to amend our, or to come up with our design contract. So, we need to add some additional engineering, structural engineering, mechanical, electrical to the team, and, and provide a, a full design through construction phase services agreement. Once we have that in place, then we can begin the next phase of design. The goal being, and we understand that, to be essentially shovel-ready the day after the pool closes, well, if it closes early, I don't know about that, but let's say Labor Day-ish, um, in 2020, so that you can be, uh, you wouldn't be without a season. You know, the goal would be for it to be open and operable by '21. Um, and that's, you know, we just have, there's a lot of moving parts we have to work through with staff on, timing of, you know, when we can get an agreement in place, your bid process, um, all of those things.
Well, and you're going through another winter and?
Right. So, you know, we've got the next spring and summer essentially to go through the design process, um, come back before you, engage the community in really what this, uh, final facility will look like.
Okay. You know the motion's been seconded. Is there anything anybody needs to say, talk about? If not, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Should we take?
Five minute break.
Yeah, let's take a little break. Take a five minute.
It is, yeah. They're hot. They're hot, huh? Must be right where we are.
005?
That's like more than five minutes.
Five within 25.
Have any commissioners?
Hey, hey, hey!
You got bum rust in the hallway. Take volunteers, three volunteers.
Anybody? Fugler? Yeah, right on.
I do wanna thank everyone for coming. Uh, this has been a, an interesting process, and, um, we, we like to have as much input as we can. Okay, who are missing?
Roy.
Well, go ahead, let's start, he'll be here sooner or later. There he is.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, I've got 10B as being what's next up.
10B?
Yep.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the governing body's asked to consider and approve a revised version of the 2019 Uniform Public Offense Code as it relates to local ordinances on smoking, vapor products, and tobacco products, as well as the use thereof in the enclosed areas and outdoor public places. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2859 dash 2019. Jennifer?
I'm gonna be very brief, Mayor and Commissioners, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the group who actually did the work on this, um, particular project. This is coming from the Community Health Advisory Board, along with the Resist Kids, who did have to leave. However, it's my understanding, you'll still hear some of their comments. Um, the Community Health Advisory Board has been working on this particular issue for, I would say, at least a year, um, really seriously over the last six months to try and get something before you. That's why they put together the pre-meeting to, uh, try and guide you to where, where you would be today. Um, and there are several members of the Community Health Advisory Board here. Um, a couple of them are gonna speak, but they're all here to support one another, um, and they all, all believe strongly in this, in this particular change to our ordinance, and I'm going to turn it over to Beth.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Beth Koksel. I am the Vice Chair of the Community Health Advisory Board. Um, the other members that we have present here today are Donna Gershner, um, Callie Dyer, Melissa Savelle, Colleen Dreese was here earlier today, but she had to leave. And I think the other two members of our board are detained at their jobs today. Um, I will say a little bit about the Resist group that was here over the last year. They've doubled in size. The kids today had to go back to school, it is finals week for them, and some of them had athletic practices too, which when we look at kids at risk for tobacco and vaping, um, these are your kids that are most at risk for, um, utilizing these drugs, are your academic kids, your athletes, um, I don't wanna say your popular kids, but kids that do excel, that are looking for a risk that they don't deem as risky as other drugs. Um, I'll let you know a little bit of the background on, um, some of the tobacco issues here in Garden City. So in 2018, um, the Community Health Advisory Board proposed a 100% tobacco-free ordinance in areas where children play. Um, this proposal came from an initiative that was introduced by Donna Gershner, and she had closely worked with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, their Young Lungs at Play Program. And we presented information about smoking and its effects on the environment and public health. A lot of the work that was done on this was done by the Resist Kids. They've been working on this for quite a number of years here in Garden City. Um, we usually only get our kids for about a two-year time period, and then they rotate over, so we've had quite a few different kids working on this initiative too. We presented what, um, other cities in Kansas were doing regarding tobacco-free playgrounds. And then, following the information given by the Community Health Advisory Board, the governing body considered and approved an ordinance presented making parks or playgrounds in the city of Garden City tobacco-free. So right now, just the playgrounds are tobacco-free. Um, moving forward to October 15th of this year, we did the pre-meeting again with the Resist Kids and the Community Health Advisory Board, where we gave an overview, um, and had relied on. and the Community Health Advisory Board, where we gave an overview and relied on health professionals to help give additional information about the dangers of secondhand smoke and disease. We reviewed current smoking codes with all of you, gave definitions, examples, and exemptions in the current code. You should have had all of the information, again, in your packet this week. So the Community Health Advisory Board would like to provide its reasoning behind the proposed changes to the ordinance. Smoking increases litter. Cigarettes make up more than one-third of all collected litter in the U.S. Cigarette butts leak toxic chemicals, such as arsenic, into the atmosphere. Cigarettes take years to decompose. Earlier this year, the Resist Group found over 240 tobacco litter items on two separate occasions after conducting environmental scans in Harold Long Park and Stevens Park, if you guys recall. Both of these scans were right around the times when large groups of the community was present in the parks. One was for the Easter egg hunt in Harold Long Park, and the other one was for the Fiesta and Homecoming Parade that was held this September. Cartridges from vaping products are non-biodegradable and can leak harmful chemicals into the environment, which can lead to human and animal exposure. Tobacco products create litter in the form of chewed tobacco that has been spit out, wrappers and packaging that have been improperly disposed of, and disposed cigar butts. Secondhand and thirdhand smoke and vapor are harmful to public health and the environment due to air pollution. Secondhand smoke contains more than 7,000 chemicals. Hundreds are toxic, and about 70 can cause cancer. Secondhand smoke causes numerous health problems in infants and children, including more frequent and severe asthma attacks, respiratory infections, ear infections, and sudden infant death syndrome. Non-smokers who are exposed to secondhand smoke at home or work increase their risk of developing heart disease by 25 to 30 percent. Non-smokers who are exposed to secondhand smoke are inhaling many of the same cancer-causing substances and poisons as smokers. Vapor and aerosol from vapor products contain more chemicals than traditional cigarettes, therefore causing the same, but greater public health and environmental hazards. Addictive substances and cancer risk. Cigars, cigarettes, tobacco products, and vaping products have been found to increase the risk of cancer. The chemicals used in cigarettes, tobacco products, and vaping products include nicotine and are harmful and addictive. By regulating cigarettes, tobacco products, and vapor products, as shown in the proposed ordinance, the public health and well-being of the environment in the city would be promoted by decreasing exposure to the risks of cigarettes, tobaccos, tobacco products, and vapor products to the people, and especially children. Additionally, children and young adults will have less opportunities to see adults smoking and using tobacco products in public places, which could lead to the children to learn by example and take up using these products themselves. With that, the Community Health Advisory Board would like to propose an ordinance that makes amendments to the sections 62-2 of the current code. These amendments would bring changes to the current smoking definition, would make it, which would make it applicable to vapor products. Additionally, the proposed ordinance also extends to a smoking ban, which includes the use of tobacco products to city-owned parks, public assembly seating, and athletic fields. For the purposes of the proposed ordinance, the smoking and tobacco product use ban extends to the Lee Richardson Zoo. Additionally, the smoking and tobacco product ban use does not extend to Buffalo Dunes Golf Course, because it's neither a park, playground, nor athletic field. However, the ban would extend to the chalet seating area located at Buffalo Dunes. So, do you guys want me to read the alternatives, or? I, I watch enough of these that... So your alternatives are, one, the governing body may approve changes to the smoking definition to include vaping, and apply a ban on smoking and the use of tobacco products at parks and other outdoor recreational facilities and areas. Or, two, the governing body may not approve the proposed ordinances. And I can entertain any questions, along with the other members of the Community Health Advisory Board, too.
What were the students going to say?
They were going to talk about the litter, a lot of the same things that they said when they came before you for the pre-meeting.
Well, I do want to say, I appreciate the work of Livelaw for New County. Not only is, are the ordinances and these issues, you're bringing up to change, you know, way, way that smoke is handled in public, but also of the programming that you're doing to really help people get off of, off of cigarettes or e-cigarettes and those. I think that's a really important aspect. It's not just about, you know, just about the ordinances and the regulations, but it's really about livel, you know, really hoping to help change behavioral habits, knowing that, you know, people are looking for a healthy lifestyle. So I really appreciate that work also that you're doing.
Yeah, the kids are pretty passionate about the fact that parks are places where people go to engage in healthy activities, and that they should be protected, too.
The biggest problem with this is how do you enforce it? And, I mean, if somebody wants to smoke, and they're down at the park, and, I mean, it's, it's... I mean, I, I'm not opposed to the idea, it's just, it's very hard to enforce it.
And I'll kind of address that for you a little bit. When we do have ordinances like this, it makes community enforcement a little bit easier for those of us. So knowing that something is not allowed makes me more apt to say something that, to somebody that's doing it.
But at the same, sorry, Jennifer, at the same time, I mean, isn't littering already not allowed? I mean, I mean, I don't think anybody, I know, nobody thinks the appropriate thing to do with the cigarette butts is to put them anywhere on the ground and leave them.
Yes, correct.
So, but I mean, so if we're talking about a littering issue, we already have a...
It's just one part of it, is...
Right, right. But, but there is something to say where you can have something that's an ordinance that is disregarded.
I guess you could put signs up.
And usually, and I believe that KDHE does provide smoke-free park signs at no charge to communities that implement ordinances like this.
You know the routine.
Something that I might add, I just read yesterday that Las Vegas is trying to enact a tobacco-free parks ordinance. So if they could do it, I mean, Las Vegas, excuse me, I mean, think about it.
I just wanted to weigh in on the enforcement perspective. That was one of the things that the Community Health Advisory Board talked about significantly in our discussions, and it was something that we sought further legal counsel for. So James Dummermuth, who works for Randy Grzel, did a ton of research to make sure that this ordinance would be something that we could enforce, because I think that was part of what I told the Community Health Advisory Board, was that creating another policy that was very difficult for law enforcement to do anything with, if they were called somewhere, was hard to enforce, and it was hard to do something with. But the way we created this is, I believe it's enforceable, and if a citizen were to call law enforcement, and an officer was to show up, they could write them a ticket, and then they would have to go to municipal court, which I believe is an inconvenience, even if, you know, it's not a jail sentence or anything, but it does lead to an inconvenience. So I think that we did try and think around all of the enforce, enforcement things, and Chief can weigh in on how they enforce other types of tickets that don't have jail sentences, but we have a lot of those, and, and we enforce them on a regular basis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, tobacco violations is basically a cite and release violation, and that's how we've handled it under the current ordinances, so it'd be really no different than how we do it now.
Have you ever issued a citation?
Have I?
No.
Years ago, yes, but, apart, go ahead.
I just wondered if you'd ever cited anybody for violating?
Yes, we have, up in the schools. We have a huge issue up there in the schools with vaping and smoking, and there's been citations issued up there. And they, contrary to some of the social media, we're not arresting, we're citing and releasing. It's technically an arrest, because we're detaining somebody, but it is actually a cite and release violation.
This idea of education and awareness, I think, I mean, really, this is what the ordinance puts into place, that there is an awareness, and, I mean, education might be in the form of a citation and, you know, a form of a warning, but there is something that they can do that, so. I move that we approve ordinance number 2859-2019.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2859-2019 regarding smoking products, vapor products, tobacco products in closed areas and outdoor public places. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion carried.
Mayor and Commissioners, item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution declaring the boundary of the city of Garden City. As of January 1st, 2002, I'm sorry, January 1st, 2020. If approved, it would be resolution number 2836-2019. Carol?
Yes, we are required by the state to pass a resolution every time we either enlarge or decrease our borders in the city. This year, we did have one annexation, since it terraced states, and that is why we are here with this resolution for the change of our city boundaries.
I make... What, Terrace Estates is the one east, right? You might clarify.
By the cemetery?
Sunset, it'd be just, what, south? And then it ties back to our existing boundaries over there, that little narrow strip?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2836-2019.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2836-2019. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the renewal of the Rural Housing Incident District Resolution, which outlines the policy and use of RHIDs within the city of Garden City for 2020.
Okay, the RHID program is a state program that requires us to renew it, to be eligible for it as a city. In the past, we've started this program in 2012. Just some stats, we have built 290 housing units that fall within the RHID program. This resolution is here for you today to just keep in the system. This year, we did not have any new RHIDs formed, however, we did have seven, I believe it was, seven new areas established into, well, they're kind of in different stages. Six of them have been approved by the state, one of them is, to the state right now, to be approved. Of all of the, and just another interesting statistic, of all the certificate of occupancies issued this year, 84% of them came from homes built in an RHID subdivision. So this, this is not approving any specific RHID, this is just allowing the city to participate in the program.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 2837-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2837-2019 regarding RHDI resolutions? Resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution?
This is for 715 St. John Street. For this resolution, we do have a red truck and a beige car, and both of them are expired plates and parked on grass. We've got five of these coming up, so this is the first of five. We have, staff has gone through the steps to abate the situation.
And again, no contact from the individuals from this?
Zero contact, Laura's our...
So because this is on the same property, we can make one resolution for each?
Correct, correct, one resolution per property.
I move that we approve resolution 2828-2019.
2838-2019.
I'll make up numbers as we go along.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2838-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. This would be 2839, if approved.
Okay, and this is for 304 North Third Street. There are some photos, there are three vehicles in this one, a red truck and a red car, and then a white and a green truck in the driveway. This, this case, some of the pictures in the rear yard show there's, there could be some environmental concerns. We do have an environmental case, but this, before you right now, is just for the vehicles, removal of the vehicles. And no contact with the applicants, right?
Entertained the motion for resolution 2840? I'll make that motion, 28...
39.
39, oh.
I know.
3839-2019, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2839-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, this would be resolution 2840.
All right, this is for 1403 Wallace. This, your memo does say that there are four vehicles, however, the last vehicle listed, the Suzuki, we did, it come, it did come to our attention that their tag is still... Valid, and so we're going to omit, omit that one from this resolution. However, the other cars do have expired plates and are illegally parked.
Okay, I'll take a swing at this. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2840-2019 amended to remove the black four-door Suzuki.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2840-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, this would be 2841.
All right, this is for 705 Summit. We do have three vehicles here. Staff has been through the process of trying to get ahold of them and have been unsuccessful.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2841-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2841-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
10J, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, would be 2842.
Okay, this violation is for 803 Summit. There are actually six vehicles in this resolution, this violation. And, yeah, there are quite a few. No response from the, the owners of the home or the people living there.
And there's no tags, current tags?
No, what, on all of the vehicles that you can see, there are either expired tags or no tags. And then the white truck is actually pulled up on some kind of a...
Block?
Blocks or something, so we consider that inoperable.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2842-2019. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a proposal for prosecution services from the Law Office of David West. This is mine, so I, at, the previous two meetings ago, so the, your second meeting in November, I came before you and asked that we put out an RFP for prosecution services. And in the meantime, I told you that we were kind of in a place where two of the full-time staff members who worked for the prosecutor's office would be transitioning. They have since transitioned, and all of those duties, as Alicia spoke earlier, have been transitioned into municipal court, except for two items, prosecution services specifically, and victim duties. And both of those would be part of this contract with David West and his law office. law office. We did interview him, um, myself, uh, city manager Alan, uh, HR director Medina, and, and city commission, commissioner, um, Dick sat in, we met with him for about an hour, and everybody out of that felt like the recommendation should be to go ahead and move forward with this one-year contract and see, um, if this was a good option for the city moving forward.
Is it local?
He is not, he's out of liberal, um, yes, and we, we talked about that, um, included in this, you will see the proposal that he made to the city with all of, all of the things, and then, um, also included is the contract that, uh, Randy Grzel drafted and David approved, uh, prior to this meeting.
Okay.
Uh, during the interview, I thought he did a very good job, and he, he was very knowledgeable and presented himself well, and was, I think, pretty well experienced in this, so he seemed like a very good candidate for this.
Well, I appreciate that, he does live in liberal, so there would be less conflict of interest, and so that, I make a motion, we approve the contract as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract for prosecution services, uh, by David West, law firm. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so eleven B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an interlocal agreement for the municipal judge, county counselor, between the city of Garden City and Finy County. Um, again, this is an issue that, um, we brought before you in September of this year about, um, whether or not the city and the county would like to work together, rather than having two part-time positions in our community, uh, making this a full-time position that might attract more candidates. We have been going through this process, and I believe, uh, will have something, uh, solidified hopefully by the end of this week for that position. We, we had, uh, an interview process last Monday, and then we had one, um, yesterday, and, um, this here is the interlocal, not for, uh, contract of employment or anything like that, I think there was maybe some confusion on the other side, but this is just the agreement between the city and the county, and how we're agreeing to share this person, how we're agreeing to pay for the services of this person, and then the person that we hire will be a city employee, um, and will be hired by the city manager. So, um, we feel like this is a good thing to try, we feel like it's something that will be really beneficial to both sides, and we're excited about, about this joint opportunity.
I make a motion, we approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Garden City and Finy County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the interlocal agreement with the, for the municipal judge and county counselor between the city of Garden City and Finy County. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have already done eleven C, so we will move on to twelve A, which is, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the twenty twenty property and liability insurance renewal, renewal for the city of Garden City, Kansas.
I make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty property liability insurance renewal as, uh, presented.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the twenty twenty property liability insurance renewal, the city of Garden City. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so on twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve year-end transfers from the general fund, zero zero one, to the capital improvement reserve, zero zero five, for selected twenty nineteen programs, capital projects, and equipment purchases not completed by year's end.
I make a motion that we-
Just a minute.
Sorry, Melinda.
No, that's okay. I can get through this real quick, you know? I don't mind sitting down. Would you like to have-
I read it, I, no.
No, if you would like to have any information on the transfers that we're proposing on the, from the departments, I can sure do that real quickly if you'd like. Okay, all right, they're all pretty set.
Right, they were.
Yes.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
You guys knew what I was gonna say. See, Linda's not official.
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah.
We've already done it.
Okay.
Well, no, we haven't.
Really?
No, we need to have which, what the actual motion is.
Okay, we need a motion.
She's just finishing her motion.
Okay, that's right.
For the clerk. Um, I make a motion that we approve the year-end transfers from the general fund to the capital improvement reserve, um, as, uh, delineated in the memo.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, um, the transfer of, uh, from the general fund to the CIR. Mm-hmm. For select programs, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a three-year contract with Acceleron Software, Inc., for providing prepay options to utility customers.
Prepay?
Yeah, good afternoon, mayor and commissioners, uh, as you all know, we, we live in a digital age, digital age of convenience, and customers increasingly expect to have access to information at their fingertips. Back in August of this year, the service and finance department started offering a customer portal to Garden City utility users, uh, residential and commercial, uh, that allows them to go in and electronically look at their usage on their particular utility bill. So you can get in there, you can see how much electricity you use today, to the month, et cetera, same with water. Uh, as an expansion of, as another option for them to, for the residential customers to be considered, excuse me, I kinda got a cold going on, but, uh, this my usage prepay option is now being considered to be implemented. Uh, this option would allow up to five hundred residential customers to pay in advance for their utilities whenever it is more convenient for them to, to do so. It'd be just like a debit card, you can go and you can pay your utility bill ahead of time, put so much on there, as your usage increases, you'll be notified at certain intervals saying, Mike, you only got five hundred kilowatt hours left, Mike, you only got fifty dollars left, whatever threshold I set at, we get the alarm, I take my card, I go back, I put more money on it, and it's, starts again from whatever I put in there. By doing this, it allows the customers to decide how much they wanna pay. Uh, oftentimes, we run into the standard utility billing, you know, every thirty days, thirty-one days, doesn't quite coincide with when they get paid from company X, Y, Z, or we've had seniors complain that it doesn't time well with their social security payments or other benefits that they may receive, so this would be an option for them to use as well. Uh, like I said, it allows the customer to monitor their residential usage and set alarms as to how much they use, and when, warn them before they get to a zero balance. Uh, once they get to a zero balance, after multiple alarms, uh, the electricity will go off, uh, automatically. We have the, uh, they're called RD meters, remote disconnect meters, that we program to do this, and then the minute that, if it's my house and I get shut off, I can go down, I can, I can, I'll have to go down, I get on my phone and load that card back up, and my lights come right back on.
So, Mike, I had a question as far as, so the even pay, I know there's other, several payment options, so is it, does this get rid of even pay for customers, or, it's just an additional, I mean, that's what I was confused about, does it play, take the place of what we're already doing, or is this is just an additional?
It's an additional one that allows you to pay whatever you wanna pay, so if you're even pay, your bill is a hundred and twenty dollars a month, that's what you're gonna pay every month, or you're gonna get, uh, you know, some information from the service and finance office, saying you're not keeping up, we're gonna have to do something different. This just allows you to pay what you wanna pay. So let's say you use, say you use fifty dollars a month between water, electric, trash, et cetera, uh, you can put a hundred dollars on there, and when it starts getting down close to that zero balance, you can put another fifty dollars on there, so you can pay it as you go, you don't have to wait for that thirty-day invoice from the city at the end of the month saying that you know you owe us a hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So there's no way to pay in advan, so the only advantage of this is that you can pay using via your digital, rather, could you, can you come in, from my understanding, you can come in and pay in advance at the city already?
You can do that, sure.
So this just allows us a digital part of it?
What it does is it allows you to do it electronically, that's correct, it allows us to not have to send out a service, uh, person to disconnect the services, it allows the, the benefit for the customer is that, what we find is that, once you get in that situation where you're behind, and you don't receive your income until a certain day, you're always three or four days behind, so you're always getting that late notice, you're gonna get that disconnect notice, and if you get disconnected, then there's a fifteen-dollar reconnect fee. So it's, it's like a cycle that they can't ever break when you get into that, when you get into that situation. This allows them, there'll be no more late fees, you know, nothing, if you don't pay, you get shut off. It's kinda like, you know, if you drive your car and you don't put gasoline in it, it's gonna run out when it gets to impound. The same thing is here, when it runs out, you're out. The other thing is, the benefit is, when new customers come in and they want to establish service that they don't have, you know, adequate credit, or they don't have a report from their previous utility, it's a two hundred dollar deposit, that, that'll go away, they won't have to do that, they can just put whatever they want on that car, they can put fifty bucks on it and start for the day, and when it gets close to running out, then, uh, they can put more on it.
I guess my, my concern, I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayorhead, I acknowledge that the convenience would be nice, I'm not sure it's worth a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. I mean, I, I have a hard time justifying that cost for that number of customers that might use that as a convenience. Maybe I'm incorrect in underestimating the need for this service, but I just, I find that to be a pretty stiff price.
Well, and then there were, and that, the seven dollars and thirty-three cents per month per customer, that we are basically, you know, using it whole charge, now, when convenience comes in, oftentimes you have to pay for convenience, I know sometimes when you put things on a credit card, you have to pay an up fee for use of a credit card, so I'm curious about your decision not to offset any of the cost of-
Well, and that's, that's certainly, you know, I'm bringing forward to you, if it was a free service to offer to the customers, that's what that would be, and you're absolutely right, it's a hundred and two, thirty-two thousand dollars for a three-year period. Uh, that includes all of the software necessary to get started, that's, that's a big part of it, I think seventy-six thousand of that is the software, and then, there's a required change to our current billing software that allows that process to work, and they give the dollars added to their account.
So does it go through the service and finance department still, or is it directly through the utility service, that's why I was-
Oh, no, it'll, everything still, all of the billing still goes through service and finance, all utility billing goes through service and finance. Uh, this is just a way, since, uh, utilities, department utilities, in charge of the water meters, electric meters, et cetera, this is a change that we would, it, it'll, it'll help us from having to send people out all the time to disconnect people that's on that list, and if you're in those, if you're one of those people that get caught up in that, I, I agree, fifteen dollars a, a month isn't a big deal, but it is if you're one of the ones that can't afford it. And it, granted, it is, and it is an expense, some of the other utilities, the neighboring electric utility does the same service, but they charge three dollars per customer to be able to use this service, and we're certainly open to, you know, if you want us to go back and look at what we would charge or not charge, or whatever you want, it was really just to bring forward to you to get some input as to whether we wanted to move forward and do something like this.
Is this the only company that offers this?
Uh, they're the most prevalent, I guess, in the, in that world, there's others that would do it, I'm sure, but these people have worked with our billing software before, and so they have that relationship, they know that there won't be that many changes in our billing software to, to make this work.
And I see the advantage of not having to pay a big deposit when you come, you know, I mean, but, I mean, I guess, most people expect a deposit when you're moving to a different city, and so, I mean, I can see the savings on that cost, I just, um, like again, I think the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars was, I, that was surprising, and then we don't recoup any, I mean, you know, 'cause again, I think this is a convenience, and, and I understand saving money, um, but, so.
Yeah, I agree. That's my question, is this, is this an issue of, is the target customer one that's for convenience, or is it one that has bill payment issues?
Yeah.
Is that because, no, I'll just finish out the rest of my thought, the reason is it because if it's for targeting convenience, a fee makes sense.
Right.
If it's for targeting those that have issues with paying bills, if this is adopted, adding seven dollars a month to those payers' bills, kind of is, is, kinda defeats the purpose, because then you're almost always putting in a late, reduce late fee, but it's almost always a late fee onto that, so what, what's the, what's our ideal use case for this?
Well, I think ideally, uh, uh, as you mentioned, if it's for convenience, I just want it because it's convenient for me and I don't have to mess around getting a utility bill every month, that probably is worth the fee for me to pay that convenience. I pay a convenience to the bank to be able to do my banking, et cetera, et cetera, so that would be worth that fee. Those that are behind, it defeats the purpose. So they're the ones that actually would be getting, and, and we can, you know, we're more than happy to go back and do more research and find out, should if you wanna sign up for convenience, there's a fee, if you're signing up because, for some other reason, then that can be decided, if there's a fee associated with that or not. Really, we just wanted to bring it forward to see-
Yeah, 'cause I'm trying to figure out how this, like, you know, even pay or some of the other options, or working with their elective department, I'm trying to figure out how this, 'cause to me, when you put it, so, I mean, I know, it, I mean, it keeps changing, now if it's a convenience, so I can see that, and I think that should bear some type of a cost, I'm not saying the whole seven dollars.
Sure.
But, I mean, if it's really working with customers, I mean, I, I mean, I've heard a lot of people who have come and said, hey, I've worked with our elective department, they're doing a good job making us, working with us, so.
You know, I, I think a bigger problem, and I've thought this for a long time, we don't give people enough time between the time they get their bill and the time it's due. If you look at, at Black Hills, I mean, they give you, I don't know, three weeks or something? We give you about ten days?
You know, actually, you receive your bill, and then it tells you you have thirty days before that's due, and then you have fifteen days after we say that your bill is overdue, you have another fifteen days to pay it before.
Yeah, but by the time you get it-
No, you, you, you still have considerable time.
I didn't think we had that long.
I don't know what else to top of my head.
Open up your mail when you get it.
Fifteen days, the billing day.
Fifteen days, yeah.
So depending on the mayor.
Well, and it's getting slower, I think, it takes a good three days.
If you would like, we can do a little bit more research and come back with maybe some other options, or-
Yeah, and I wonder what we can do in-house, maybe to, you know, maybe make a change, does a change of three days make a big difference, you know, or, so, something that we can kind of do, maybe to, to ease a little bit of that pressure on some of our, our customers who are having difficulty, and yet still be reasonable, and a, as well responsible, you know?
Well, they can use Jack out here.
Jack.
That's true, and we do, and we do-
Jack's the kiosk.
Uh, the office down there does meet with those individuals and says, okay, it's-
After hours.
On the fifteenth, it's due on the eighteenth, just to have, uh, I, I think, I understood, I'll get more information and come back at a later-
Yeah, I think we-
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep. D. Run, twelve D.
The governing body's asked to consider and approve a final water rights agreement and purchase, Mike?
Uh, yes, uh, commissioners, uh, on October twenty-eighth, Mr. Mike Jiggett, that's twenty-one fifty-five Old Highway eighty-three, approached the city staff about the city possibly acquiring water rights located on his property on, uh, Old South Highway eighty-three, his property is right adjacent to, two of our existing water wells, it's right there in the area. Uh, during the discussion, it was determined that he has eighty acre feet of water rights, uh, that's adjacent to our well, that's in the Sand Hills Formation where we get that water, uh, and that we would not have to install any new equipment to be able to take that water right from him, it'll just be transferred over into us, and we'll be able to pump more water out of an existing well. Uh, in our discussion with Mr. Jiggett, he wanted a nine hundred dollars per acre foot for this water, uh, I went back and looked, did some research, and we've paid as little as two seventy-five, we've paid as high as over twelve hundred and fifty per acre feet, so this is well within the realm of what we've paid before. Also, that, the big thing is that, uh, Fred Jones, our water resource manager, went back and confirmed with DWR that we will be able to pump that water out of our existing well, we won't have to put any new equipment in at all, so that's, that's worth extra, if you will. Uh, we'll require, uh, Mr. Jiggett to complete some actions with DWR, and the city attorney's working to get that stuff squared away right now, but before he committed to go forward, But before he committed to go forward, he wanted some assurance from the city commission that he would approve this, uh, purchase of 80 acre feet of water rights for $72,000.
Do we, uh, we have enough water rights right now to, for several years?
A few.
What do you think?
Out there?
No, I, I'm talking about total.
Do you ever have enough water rights, Fred?
Well, you, I just, don't mean to speak for Fred, but anytime you can get water rights, good water rights, to an existing well, you want to take it. He has 280, or there's an additional 248 acre feet of water rights out there that at some point in time could come for sale.
Right.
Uh, we don't have excess water rights in this general area. We do on the east side of town. We've purchased, when we purchased property, then turned around, sold it and kept it just for the water rights, but, uh, we can certainly...
I don't, I don't quite understand. I guess I don't understand how, in other words, you got a well over here, you're going to pull his water anyway, aren't you? I don't get it.
You only get permission to pump some.
So if, if the existing water right is within a certain geographic distance of another
water right, you can apply to the division to have that right stacked. And so we have two wells that are well within that geographic distance that, that well would be pumping the same, out of, basically out of the same geographic area, but we'd only be pumping it from one point of diversion instead of two.
So we're limited on what we can pump out of that well now?
We're limited on what we can pump out of every well by law. So we only have rights to pump a specific quantity of water out of each well unless we acquire this additional right.
And Fred, this well can actually produce the, um, uh, the amount, like, you might have rights that say you can pump 1,000 gallons a minute, but you may only be able to, like, functionally, because of the health of the aquifer in that location, get 200 gallons a minute. This, this well's producing...
These wells are higher-producing wells. We should, we should be able to take advantage of...
The quality of the water down there is, well, very hard.
Well, the quality of the water in the Sand Hills is the best quality water that's available to the city without treatment right now.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. What...
I move that we authorize the city attorney to finalize the agreement for the purchase of 80 acre feet of water rights from Mr. Mike Jiggett in an amount of $72,000.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agreement to purchase 80 feet?
You're just, you're just authorizing the city to move forward.
Move, move forward with the agreement.
I've drafted the agreement, and Mr. Jiggett is reviewing it, but it's subject to you saying go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item, the governing body's asked to consider and approve the city purchasing track day of Wilson third edition property.
Thank you, Matt. With the development of the Sports of the World complex located on LaRue Road, it's necessary for the electric department to install new electric facilities to serve this entire area. Uh, there'll be a looped power system that the developer has already paid for, to put all that infrastructure in. It's approximately $700,000 worth of infrastructure that's been paid to be put in. Uh, this particular piece of property, uh, is located at the corner of the, the intersection of LaRue and Stones Creek Drive. I, I believe there's a map in there somewhere. What we would like to do is purchase that particular lot, uh, for $19,000. That's the, that's the price that we've been able to negotiate with that property owner. Uh, we would then in turn put our facilities that we need to on there, and if it doesn't take up a big piece of that property, it could be turned right around and issued back up for sale at some other point, or another city department may choose to use it for something else.
Is that that property right south of those retail?
Yep.
Right there on the corner where that...
Stibian oil.
Yeah, I know where that is. Okay, okay.
I make a motion we authorize...
Wait, can I ask a question? Excuse me. So we would own the property, but Sports of the World would actually own the, the equipment on the property?
No, 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 no. When any kind of development like this, a commercial development, the developer pays for all of the infrastructure required to go in.
Right.
So they pay it. We own it and operate it.
We own it, they're just paying that...
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. That makes sense to me.
I make a motion, we authorize the purchase of parcel A Wilson third edition in the amount of $19,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of Track A of the Wilson third edition for $19,000. Any further discussion?
You're approving the agreement.
Agreement.
Subject to it being completed with the legal description. We, there's been an offer and acceptance of the purchase amount. The, the agreement is out to the seller, but we don't have a legal description yet. I don't think so.
Meets and bounds.
Okay.
Has it ever been planted?
Yes. We have everything there, we just don't have the meets and bounds when we had it surveyed.
Oh, okay.
That's what Randy's needing. Excuse me.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you.
The governing body's asked to consider and approve HNTB Corporation as the Garden City Regional Airport Consultant. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. Uh, every five years, the FAA asks us to go out for consultant selection, and they provide us guidance on how to go about that. And the city can, the city, along with two airport staff and airport advisory board member, Charlie Robinson and Commissioner Roy Sussman, formed a committee. We reviewed the three proposals after we, um, released a request for qualifications to be submitted to the city. The committee reviewed the three proposals, Burns and Mack, uh, HNTB and Garber. Um, we did a rating scale that's also part of your packet information, and it was determined that HNTB was the lowest score, which is the best score. Um, so we're recommending the selection of HNTB as the airport consultant for the next five years. The advisory board met last week and also provided a recommendation of approval.
Have, have you worked with this company before?
Yes, they've served the airport for the last 10 years.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve, um, the agreement with HNTB to be our airport consultant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve HNTB Corporation as our, uh, can, airport consultant for the next five years. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, five to one.
Item G, the governing body's asked to consider and approve appointments to the airport advisory board. Rochelle?
Uh, the airport advisory board has three positions that are opening up. Uh, two of the members that are currently serving, Tyler Dynas and Blair Loving, would like to serve a second consecutive term. And then Darren Gurman is, um, has served two full, um, terms and is no longer eligible for a third consecutive term unless a waiver's granted. We did have two applications, Erin Anderson and Manuel Navara, apply for the board, and the airport advisory board reviewed both applications last week and, um, recommended approval of Erin Anderson to the airport advisory board.
I move that we approve the appointment of Tyler Dynes, Blair Loving, and Erin Anderson to the airport advisory board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointees, including Erin Anderson, uh, to the advisory board, airport advisory board. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, five to one.
Thank you.
Five to zero.
Item H, the governing body's asked to consider and approve appointments to the Public Utilities Advisory Board. Mike?
Okay. Last one on my list for today. Uh, back on November 5th of 2019, you guys, the, the city commission approved resolution number 2829-2019, which amended the requirements of the Public Utilities Advisory Board. That resolution reduced the membership from nine members to five. Uh, four of which must remain in, uh, resident of Garden City, and the remaining number, which is one, must reside in Finney County. Uh, the resolution also defined the new term lengths for the memberships as follows. One term, one, one membership shall be for a term that will expire January 1 of '21. Two shall be a term that will expire on January 1 of 2022, and then two more will expire on January 1 of 2023. After that, all of the cycles will be on a three-year term. Uh, through the city clerk, we received five applications to serve. Four of them are current membership, current members of the Public Utility Advisory Board. All four of those are eligible to serve again. Uh, and then the fifth one is currently not a member. So the, uh, the five members are the five people that applied. Beverly Schmitz Glass, she's the current chairperson of the board. Steve Michael is the vice chair. Both of their terms expire on January 1 of 2020. Ronaldo Mesa, his term expires on January 1 of 2020. And Ronaldo was just recently appointed to the planning commission by the city commission, which doesn't...
The board of zoning...
Okay, thank you, Carol. Doesn't prohibit him from serving on this board as well. Uh, John Hahn, his term expires on January 1 of '21, so his doesn't expire yet, but under the new resolution, he should be reappointed to one of those terms. And then Chris Law also applied, and he's currently not a member. So you could accept all five applications and appoint a term to each applicant. You could accept some or none of the applications and assign terms, or you could direct staff to re-advertise.
So, I'm sorry, so there's no relationship between the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Public Utilities Board, so there's no conflict of interest there? I'm just asking.
The Public Utilities Advisory Board makes the decisions, they just would advise the city commission.
I make a motion that, oh, go ahead. I'll make a motion that we accept all five applications and appoint a term to each applicant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint the five applicants.
In the order that there is.
In the order, yeah.
So are you going to let Mike decide that? The terms?
Yes.
You can...
Yeah, I'll, I'll confer with the city manager.
Well, why don't you just...
Or just do it?
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Then they can approve it in the motion.
Yeah, the governing body needs to.
But then my recommendation would be is the, uh, Beverly Schmidt Glass be appointed to a, a two-year term that expires January 1 of 2022. Steve Michael, a term that would expire also January 1 of 2022. John Hahn would expire at his term the end of 2021. And then, then Chris Law would expire on 20, January 1 of 2023.
My motion's amended.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
You didn't appoint Ronaldo?
It'd be 23.
So he would be 23 as well?
I'm sorry, yes, Ronaldo would be 23.
You made the motion to have the governing body approve all of those individuals, and Mike just added the information about the terms beginning and ending. And that would be your motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Can you approve that second?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got that?
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion to approve those individuals to the Public Utilities Advisory Board as presented. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I don't say it before, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I am, the governing body's asked to consider and approve an appointment to the planning commission. Carol?
Planning commission is a nine-member commission. Um, we do have one term that's expiring for the city. Um, right now, Mario Lopez serves, um, as the planning commissioner. His term will be expiring. He has already served three terms, got a waiver to serve two more terms. Um, so, well, actually, two terms, and then he got a waiver suit that served two more terms. Um, he has expressed that he is definitely willing to continue, um, if, if there is nobody else that, uh, would like to take his place. Um, and however, we do have two applicants, Jesus Diaz and Ronaldo Mesa, um, to serve on this, on this, uh, planning commission. So you do your choices today, or either reappoint, uh, do a waiver for Mario and reappoint him, or Jesus Diaz, or Ronaldo Mesa.
I'd make a motion that we, um, appoint Mr. Diaz to the planning commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Mr. Diaz, uh, to the planning commission. Any further discussion?
I do want to say Mario Lopez, as I mean, I've watched his, he is an incredible, he is an incredible planning commission member. I mean, he's almost at every meeting, so I do want to just publicly thank him for all the work he has done. But I, I agree, I appreciate that we have new people who are interested in the planning commission.
That's my point. It, it, not, not to take away from Mr. Lopez at all, but he's had a great service, and it's nice to encourage other folks to, to step up, and I appreciate Mr. Diaz's application.
And that's exactly what Mario's sentiment was. He, he did want to give other people the opportunity, but he, he has been wonderful, so, yes. Thank you.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you, and ditto on Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
The governing body's asked to consider and approve one appointment to the Finney County Transit Advisory Committee. Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In front of you, the Transit and the Biagre Committee has one vacant position, which is appointed by the governing body. Committee members serve a two-year term with no more than two consecutive terms. The open term which ended Octo, which will end October 8, 2020, was created by the resignation of Kyle Sawyer. Nancy Mater has, uh, submitted her application to be considered to fill the unexpired term on the committee ending October 8, 2020. So in front of you, the alternatives would be appoint Nancy to serve on the committee to fill the unexpired term, two, appoint another applicant, or three, delay the appointment to solicit more interest. Both the board and staff recommends appointing Nancy to the, to the Transit Advisory Committee.
I make a motion that we appoint Nancy Mater to serve on the committee filling the expired term ending October 8, 2020.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint, um, Nancy Mater to the Finney County Transit Advisory Committee.
I'll also say Merry Christmas, too.
Thank you.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Congratulations to all the new advisory board and commission members.
Right, a whole new slate. I think, uh, all we have left on the agenda, Mayor and Commissioners, is the consent agenda. Uh, there, if there are no changes and no items you wish to remove to talk about separately, uh, appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda items K1 through 7.
I'll make that motion that we approve the consent agenda K127, your second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. All right, we are, Commissioner Cessna?
Yeah, what a great day to be in Garden City. We officially opened the Pioneer Pathway Trail. It was kind of chilly out there, but it does provide walking for the north part of the community, which, um, Matt Allen was stating earlier, it's been a long-term goal of ours to finally get that in the community. It also provides a safe walking, uh, pathway for students sent, to get to and from school as well. So we did take a brisk walk, and it was really brisk and cold, um, after the ribbon cutting that the Chamber of Commerce helped us with. Also, I wanted to thank, uh, the Garden City Co-op, uh, for providing the specialty equipment along with Tyson. Um, the, uh, piece of equipment that Tyson is replacing is like 20 years old, and, uh, it's at its, end of its life cycle, um, and this is a valuable piece of equipment for our fire department and our first responders. So, um, it's, you know, great that we have, um, a company that's saying thank you and giving back in a big way, but our first responders did help out and put a fire out for them, um, at their facility. Um, I know the community's very disappointed to see that the bypass project, uh, has been delayed and getting fully completed and opening to traffic, and I hope that will hopefully expedite itself in some sort of process, but I've heard from a lot of community members that they're, they're very disappointed in seeing that not opening in a timely manner like, uh, was promoted.
I thought it was supposed to open Friday, or...
Well, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year.
Thank you. Commissioner Dick?
For brevity's sake, first, we had amazing 2019, and I think we're going to have even and I think we're going to have even better twenty twenty as things shape up. It looks like we're ready to take another leap forward with our community, and that's good. Other thing is I want to express my gratitude and appreciation of everybody who's put work into the Big Pool process, from the people that were here today, letting us know, down to the third graders that jumped up and down when they saw the possible options when Jennifer presented them. And I got to see that firsthand, so thanks for everybody's effort in working on that. And I know that when we get the new facility up and going, I think our bill will be proud of what we will have for our community. Thank you.
Commissioner?
So in two thousand, we had a tragedy, the Conagra Fire, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that right? Yeah, it was named, so I worked and it was something else, so, for them when they were sent to farm. And so, you know, we had that happen right before Christmas. This year, we celebrate something differently, totally different, a re-integrization of Tyson. And their equipment that they donated, and also the Garden City Co-op, just tells you what a great job our fire department does and how much they appreciate the services. And so I want to say thank you to both of them. The Pioneer Pathway Trail, it is an incredible asset, an additional asset to our community, and how many schools it connects, and our Commissioner Cessna talked about, a safe route to that. But there's so many opportunities now for people to get out and be active. And the Big Pool, the year and a half-long process, and thank you, commissioners and staff, and everyone who's worked on the Big Pool. It has been an incredible opportunity to see the changing of something that's been so important to our community and will continue to be. So I'm excited about what's happening with the Big Pool and us moving forward. I saw Andy was here today, and I just wanted to, I'm excited that he's back in the saddle again. So, you know, so we're glad to welcome you home, and you'll have lots of work to do, so don't worry, they saved it all for you. I just want to also echo a safe and Merry Christmas. You know, this is an important time of the year to think about family and friends and having some fun. I know we've done an incredible, there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people. And making Garden City, Garden City, it takes us all, all of our residents and people who serve on many different ways. When Commissioner Burns talked about, you know, the new people serving on the new advisory committees, it is so important that we have these people who step up and say yes to incredible amount of work and also how excited it is. I'm excited about the new year, and I just wanted to, again, say Merry Christmas and travel safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Burns?
I'll just say Happy Holidays, too. Well said, my fellow commissioners, but something to be at the end of the list, huh?
How can I top that? Chief Utes and I have been seeing each other a lot here lately. We've been to the Filipino Merry Christmas Celebration. We've been to the Karen New Year, and and it seemed like, oh, the remembrance of those that have lost loved ones, and it's amazing. I've given a lot of speeches lately, and that's part of the deal when you're a mayor, so look forward to it. One thing I wanted to mention, when we went out and received that equipment from Tyson, they really expressed their gratitude to this community for how we handled everything and the support that they got from the community and also from Holcomb. And the school opened up, you know, their buildings and transported some people. I think we, our school district, transported some people. So they really noticed that in the signs that were put up, and they really appreciated that. And they've said it before, but these two gentlemen were the meat, I guess the beef, or what was their title? I can't remember exactly.
What was the head of the Red Meats?
Red Meat Division, yeah, president and one of the senior vice presidents. So they really expressed their gratitude. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe. We'll see you next year. For one addition, like, one more meeting. For me. Thank you. We are adjourned. Four thirteen.
Good work.
We did it.